Good morning and welcome to City Hall. We're going to get started with the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance. Our invocation will be delivered by Eddie Lindsey. He's the pastor at Indian Community Church. Eddie, if you'll come forward. I also ask Pastor Lindsey if he wouldn't keep in mind of the lives of two firefighters who passed away in Kansas City, Missouri yesterday in the line of duty. Would everyone please stand and we'll follow Pastor Lindsey with the Pledge of Allegiance to be delivered by Councilman Greiner.
Would you bow your heads as we pray? Our Father, scriptures remind us that we are to be good citizens and ought to obey and govern authorities since you have established those very authorities to promote peace and order and justice. Therefore, I pray this morning for our mayor, for the various leaders of city officials, in particular for this assembled council. I'm asking that you would graciously grant them wisdom, Father, to govern and mend the conflict and interest in the issues of our times. Pray that you'll give them a sense of welfare and a true need of our people. And I pray that they'll never forget our poor of our city, a keen interest for justice and righteousness, confidence in what is good and fitting, Father, the ability to work in harmony even when there is honest disagreement. Father, I pray that personal peace in their lives and joy in their task and to bless the families in the home of each one. I pray for the agenda that's set before them today. Please give assurance of what you would be pleased you and what would benefit those who live and work in around our beloved city of Oklahoma City. Father, I ask you to remember the two firemen that gave their life. I pray that you'll bless their families and watch over them. Give them peace, Lord. I ask that all in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Please join me in the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. have a lot of milestones. A lot of employees celebrating their fifth year with the city, then their 10th, their 15th, their 20th. And generally, though, that goes beyond without being mentioned in city council chambers. However, M.T. Berry is celebrating his 45th anniversary with the city of Oklahoma City today and his family is here. Could you and your family stand up, M.T.? And let's show our appreciation to M.T. Berry. M.T. joined the city in 1970, ascended through the police department ranks to become the chief of police, and then ascended into the city manager's office and he's an assistant city manager today. M.T., thank you on behalf of the citizens of Oklahoma City. Forty-five years is a long time and your dedicated service is very much appreciated. And then we're also honoring one of our employees today, who is the employee of the month. And I'll ask Kevin to come forward. Kevin, we have a resolution. I'll ask the clerk to read it as we get settled.
Whereas Kevin Bijot has been a city employee for 10 years and eight months and is an environmental technician in the stormwater quality division of the public works department. Whereas Kevin inspects businesses to verify compliance with local, state, and federal stormwater regulations. He has a keen eye for detecting pollution and even the potential for pollution in our city. He works well with his permitted facilities and maintains good working relationships with them. Whereas Kevin is an asset to the industrial section of the stormwater quality as he helps train new inspectors and interns, helps with any project as needed, suggests projects that may be beneficial to businesses or citizens, and presents training sessions at workshops. Whereas Kevin promptly addresses illicit discharges into our storm sewer system and effectively and efficiently handles situations where there is a pollution concern, following through until the concern has been completely addressed. Whereas Kevin is in charge of inspections at special events held in the city, he is thorough and goes above and beyond his regular duties, including working nights and weekends as needed, monitoring them to prevent illicit discharges. Whereas Kevin represents the city in a professional and courteous manner, makes sure special events are covered properly and works with other members of the team to schedule inspections as needed. Whereas Kevin does an outstanding job and does not hesitate to share his knowledge and expertise with his coworkers so we can better serve our community. Whereas this council desires to recognize Kevin Bijot for his dedication, professionalism, and commitment to the residents of the city of Oklahoma City. Now therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and council of the city of Oklahoma City that they do hereby thank and commend Kevin Bijot, October 2015, South Oklahoma City Quanis Club Employee of the Month.
Let's hear it for Kevin. And Kevin, the suspenseful part of this is now and we have to vote on it. So can I have a motion from council? And let's cast your votes. And it passes unanimously. I want to say one other word about Kevin. He has a personal triumph. He's lost over 200 pounds. And that's a commitment, the type of commitment we expect and get from our employees. Kevin, thank you very much. We appreciate it. Kevin Badgett. Thank you. All right. Drew Rhodes is here. Drew, where are you? Yeah, come on up. Bring your wife with you. Yeah, come on up, both of you. Drew is our Teacher of the Month for the greater Oklahoma City area. We have a resolution. I'll ask the clerk to read it.
Whereas Drew Rhodes has been named Teacher of the Month for October 2015 by the Oklahoma City Public Schools and Rotary Club of Oklahoma City. Whereas Drew has been an educator for seven years, all at U.S. Grand High School and Oklahoma City Public Schools. Whereas Drew received his bachelor's degree in social studies education from the University of Central Oklahoma. Over the course of his career, Drew has been recognized several times for his work as an educator, including as one of the nine finalists for Oklahoma City Public Schools' Teacher of the Year as well as Teacher of the Year at U.S. Grant. Whereas throughout his years of teaching at U.S. Grant, he has used his past mistakes and challenges to guide students away from a life in the streets. Drew has also created motivational music videos for his students in order to encourage them to continue to making the right decisions. Whereas Drew is extremely passionate about saving the lives of our youth and he creates lessons using real-life scenarios and history to teach students how to prepare for the real world. Drew encourages all students to think about leaving a legacy of positive changes in their community, including using their education to help them fight for more equality. His teaching model is life is temporary, inspiration is forever. Now therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and council of the city of Oklahoma City that they do hereby recognize and commend Drew Rhodes on his selection as the October 2015 Teacher of the Month by the Foundation for Oklahoma City Public Schools and the Rotary Club of Oklahoma City.
Let's hear it for Drew. We will also need a motion from council. And a second, cast your votes. And it's unanimous, Drew. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you. Instead of thank yous, what I wanted to do was share just a real quick story. I don't have that much time. I actually almost quit my job. There was a boy named Anthony Hartfield. He was at U.S. Grant for two and a half years. He was an outstanding basketball player but an even better man. And I cannot stand here without honoring him first. The reason why I'm honoring him is because he's no longer on this earth. He, at 22-years-old, was murdered in his home protecting his family. And I spent half of that school year trying to find the strength to get out of my car to go in and teach more kids, knowing what path their lives may take. I say that because each and every one of us in this room, no matter what our title is, we are all an inspiration to our younger kids and our generations that come after us. Every one of us has a responsibility. And I learned my responsibility in that car, in that parking lot, every single day. And I live with that every day. To go into the building, no matter what the lesson plan says, I want to always try to be an inspiration to these kids so that they can inspire others. So I wanted to share that story instead of thank yous because what Anthony shared with so many people is inspiration. And what we all have in common is we have expiration day. But inspiration has no expiration. I just wanted to share that. Thank you.
It is white cane safety day. Vicki Golightly is here. We have a resolution. I'll ask the clerk to read it.
Whereas the white cane is used by hundreds of Oklahoma City residents who are legally blind in order to navigate our city and access its public places, schools, and businesses. With proper training, people using the white cane can enjoy greater mobility and safety by determining the location of curbs, steps, uneven pavement, and other physical obstacles in their path. Whereas the white cane has opened the doors of opportunity to thousands of blind Oklahomans by enabling them to travel freely and independently in their communities. The white cane is now universally recognized as a symbol of blindness and improves the safety of blind pedestrians by alerting drivers when a visually impaired person is crossing a street, parking area, or other areas open to the public. Whereas Oklahoma law requires drivers to come to a full stop at least 15 feet away from a visually impaired pedestrian using a white cane or dog guide and to take such precautions before proceeding as may be necessary to avoid an accident or injury to the person who is wholly or partially blind. Whereas to honor the many achievements of blind and visually impaired citizens and to recognize the significance of the white cane in advancing independence, the United States Congress by joint resolution approved October 6, 1964, has designated October 15 of each year as White Cane Safety Day. Now therefore, Mick Cornet, the mayor of the city of Oklahoma City, does hereby proclaim October 15, 2015, as White Cane Safety Day in Oklahoma City. And he urges all citizens to observe this day by recognizing the significance of the white cane, both as a symbol of independence and as a simple tool that enables Oklahoma City residents with visual disabilities to participate more fully in the social and economic life of our city and state.
Let's show our appreciation and acknowledgement of White Cane Safety Day. Vicki and Frances Poindexter are here. Vicki?
Once again, we sincerely thank the council and the mayor for recognizing the White Cane Safety Day, which is a historic landmark act. We are the Heartland Council of the Blind and the Department of Rehabilitation Services. We are doing a walk in downtown Bricktown on the actual day, October 15. And one of the councilmen has already tentatively agreed to come read our proclamation. So again, come join us and thank you so much for the recognition of a very important day.
Absolutely. Let's show our appreciation again. Oops. I think I gave you all the wrong proclamation. Let's see. I did? Let's see. There you go. All right. It is also National Arts and Humanities Month throughout the month of October. And we have a large number of people who support the arts. Would you all come forward? We have a proclamation. I'll ask the clerk to read it. Everybody can come up.
Whereas the month of October has been recognized as National Arts and Humanities Month by thousands of arts, humanities, and cultural organizations, communities, and states across the country. Whereas since our earliest days, Oklahoma City has flourished because of the creative spirit and vision of our residents. We rely on the arts and humanities to broaden our views and our understanding of our nation and the world. Whereas arts and humanities play an important role in telling our city's story and reminding us of the truths that connect us. The insight that comes from watching a thought-provoking documentary or discovering a compelling novel sparks moments of joy, awe, and sorrow. From symphonies that bring tragedy to life to architecture that challenges the boundaries of the world around it, these works add texture to our lives and reveal the spirit of our city. Whereas cultivating the talents and minds of our young people and ensuring they have access to the arts and humanities is critical to our city's growth and prosperity. To meet the challenges ahead, we must harness the skills and ingenuity of our children and grandchildren and instill in them the same passion and persistence that has driven our city's progress and innovation. Whereas this month, we pay tribute to the tremendous power of the arts and humanities to bring us together and expose us to new ideas. And as we carry forward this proud tradition, let us celebrate the ways our city's rich heritage has strengthened our state and inspired our lives. Now therefore, Mick Cornet, the mayor of the city of Oklahoma City, does hereby proclaim the month of October as Arts and Humanities Month in Oklahoma City. And he calls upon residents to celebrate the arts and humanities in our city and encourage greater participation by all citizens in taking action for the arts and humanities in our neighborhoods, schools, and all areas of our city.
Let's show our appreciation to Arts and Humanities Month. Susan McCarthy.
Thank you. Thank you so much. I'm Susan McCarthy. I currently chair the board of the Oklahoma Humanities Council. We are a statewide nonprofit organization that was formed in 1971 with a mission to strengthen communities by helping Oklahomans learn more about the human experience, gain new perspectives, and participate more knowledgeably in civic life. We do this through the humanities disciplines of history and literature and philosophy and ethics and languages. And how lovely to hear the invocation delivered in your native language, sir. Thank you. We have a volunteer board that comes from every corner of the state, and I do mean every corner of the state, encouraging lifelong learning and creating opportunities for Oklahomans. I'd like to describe just very quickly four programs that we do this because we do all of this through a variety of programs, either that we sponsor ourselves and initiate ourselves or with other organizations. A very popular program that we have is called the Museums on Main Street. It's sponsored by the Smithsonian. It brings a wonderful program each year and we take it all around the state. This past year, it was on sports and we cooperated with OKC Thunder. It was on the impact of sports in a community. I believe there was a ribbon-cutting ceremony where you and Thunder mascot did a little work there.
It's got a little rumble.
We also have the Oklahoma Humanities Magazine, which is an award-winning magazine that goes all over the state. It's filled with humanities content. Each issue explores a theme like World War I or civil rights, humor, medicine, the common good, and even in a race-year edition, romance. We give a number of community grants to nonprofit organizations throughout the state, museums, cultural centers, universities, et cetera, to launch their own programs in their communities. And our oldest program is called Let's Talk About It, Oklahoma. This is 30 years running. It's participated in 75 different communities throughout the state where people come together to explore a theme and to read literature together, working with generally a university professor to give it some humanities context. So we are a nonprofit organization. We rely on donors, of course, corporations, individuals, like all of us here. And we also receive a grant from the National Endowment for the Humanities for administrative purposes. That's the Oklahoma Humanities Council and we thank you so much for your time today.
Thank you. Let's show our appreciation for that statewide effort. And then Deborah Center is with Allied Arts.
Thank you. Thank you, mayor, and thank you, city council. And I'm very pleased to be here today just representing several arts groups contributing to the success and vibrancy of our city. I would like to have, we have several that are still in the audience. You guys stand too. But so many artsy groups in the room today, and many of them are celebrating major milestones this year. Our own state arts agency, Amber, is here and they are celebrating a 50th anniversary this year. The Oklahoma City Arts Council will celebrate its 50th anniversary this coming year. And Allied Arts celebrates its 45th anniversary this year. And the Arts Commission, Robbie's here for the Arts Commission, celebrating its 35th. So lots of artsy people in the room, notwithstanding around the horseshoe. So Councilman Greiner, we appreciate that you are an artist. And how many cities can boast that their own mayor is a filmmaker, writer, producer, director of films? So we appreciate that. Because as Oklahomans, all of these things are important to us, making a great city. Think of the things that the arts accomplish and many reasons to support the arts. Certainly true prosperity, bringing people together of all cultures regardless of race, religion, ethnicity, or age. Building stronger communities. Researchers have demonstrated that a high concentration of arts in a city leads to higher civic engagement, more social cohesion, higher child welfare, and lower poverty rates. Health and well-being. Think about all of our programs that are in hospitals because of the healing power of the arts benefiting many patients and their families who are enduring pain management and then less medication. Also, look at the 21st century workplace. One of the greatest things that employers now look for? Creativity. Because the arts become problem solvers in these companies. Improved academic performance. Students with an education rich in the arts have higher GPAs and standardized test scores, lower dropout rates, and even better attitudes and higher community service. Arts in the schools also equal higher SAT scores. Students with four years of arts and music in high school average 100 points higher on their SAT scores than their peers with little or no exposure. Creative industries. Arts businesses stimulate innovation, strengthen America's competitiveness in the global marketplace. And tourism. Arts travelers are ideal tourists. They stay longer and they spend more. Arts are good for local merchants. The typical arts attendee has a direct spending impact between $24 and $40, translating into valuable revenue for local businesses in the community. And the arts are an industry. Arts organizations are responsible businesses, employers, and consumers. They spend money locally, generate government revenue, and are a cornerstone of tourism and economic development. Investment in the arts supports jobs, generates tax revenues, and advances our creativity-based economy. The city of Oklahoma City, its leadership and its employees continue to support the arts. Specifically for Allied Arts, our second-largest workplace is from employees of the city of Oklahoma City. That's amazing. We appreciate the support and we thank you for the proclamation.
Thank you. Let's show our appreciation. Thank you. Thank you. And we are joined on the front row here by five members of our fire department. Come on forward. Chief Bryant is here with Chief Kelly Sawyers, Kevin Berry, James Teal, and Lauren Antilla. And is that all five? Okay. All right. We have a proclamation. I'll ask the clerk to read it.
Whereas the Oklahoma City Fire Department responded to over 65,000 calls for emergency assistance in 2014. Whereas during the same year, fire killed four of our citizens, injured 15 others, and caused property loss of nearly $17 million. Whereas the men and women of the Oklahoma City Fire Department are witness to the loss and devastation caused by the fire firsthand, not only for those citizens who have lost loved ones or their homes and belongings to fire, but for their coworkers injured or killed in the line of duty. Whereas the Oklahoma City Fire Department is actively engaged in year-round public education programs to raise awareness of fire safety, to help prevent the frequency and severity of fires in our city. Now therefore, Mick Cornet, the mayor of the city of Oklahoma City, does hereby proclaim the month of October as Fire Prevention Month in Oklahoma City. And he encourages all citizens to learn about fire prevention and fire safety and apply those practices at home, at work, and throughout our city.
Let's show our appreciation, not only of our firefighters, but in fire prevention qualities. And Chief, I'm going to hand you the microphone and use this opportunity as an opportunity to remind our citizens what they can do in their homes to prevent fires.
Well, thank you, mayor. We appreciate the proclamation and appreciate the support that we get from the council in drawing attention to this every year. We have members of our public education staff here and they're working all year long, not just this month, but all year long to make sure that people have that fire prevention message. It's so important. I appreciate you mentioning the tragedy that happened in Kansas City and certainly our thoughts and prayers are with Chief Marotti and his department. But if Paul were standing here today, he would tell you if that fire never started, obviously, we wouldn't be talking about that tragedy. And that's the whole aim of fire prevention, is that we make sure that they never start and that people are doing everything they can and taking every available measure in their homes and places that they work to make sure that they're safe. And that, one, that we prevent fires, and, two, that in the event that fires happen, that they're able to escape those fires. So again, we use the month of October to draw attention to that. Every year that we have a theme for Fire Prevention Month, and I'd like to turn it over real quick to our chief of public education, Chief Kevin Berry, to tell us what this year's theme is.
Thank you, chief. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The theme for this year is Hear the Beep Where You Sleep. We're reminding residents to make sure that they have a smoke alarm, a working smoke alarm, in their bedrooms and any area where people sleep. The number-one area, a time of day that fires happen is when people are sleeping, between 11 o'clock at night and about 6 o'clock in the morning. So that's what we want to remind our citizens, to make sure you have a working smoke alarm. If you need a working smoke alarm, any of our fire stations will provide those smoke alarms to you free of charge. We will even come to your home and install them. In fact, we prefer to come to your home and install them. That way, we know they're in there correctly and you have the correct amount that you need.
Appreciate it. Let's show one more time our appreciation to our firefighters. Thank you very much. Thank you for your service. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. This is the appointment of Ray Thompson to the Oklahoma City Park Commission. Is there a motion?
Leave the items.
Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item four is the Journal of Council proceeding. Item 4, as the Journal of Council proceedings, 4A is to receive the Journal for September 29th, and 4B is to approve the Journal for September 15th. All right. Comments or questions on the Journal? Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 5 is requests for uncontested continuances.
Mayor, outside of item 9, excuse me, 11A, which was discussed a couple of weeks ago regarding the use of medians, that will not be discussed today. That will be deferred until December 8th, December 8th on that item. Outside of that, moving to, on page 15, under item 9, L1, I guess it's I1, 9I1. Item B, 2820, North Robinson, whereas that be stricken, needs to be re-notified. Item C, 2004, Northwest 20th Street, whereas that be deferred until November 10th at the request of Councilman Selyer. Item 9J1. Item F, 3720, North Pennsylvania, whereas that be stricken, the owner has secured. And item O, 212 Southeast 40th, whereas that be stricken, the owner has secured. And moving on to page 16, item 9K1. Item G, 2820, North Robinson, whereas that be stricken, we need to re-notify. Item N, 204 Northwest 20th, whereas that be deferred till November 10th. That's at the request of Councilman Selyer. And finally, item S, 212 Southeast 40th, whereas that be stricken, the owner has secured.
Any other requests for uncontested continuances? All right. Item 6 is a list of revocable permits. The first is an agreement with the USA Track and Field Sanctioned Fitz, Inc. Is anyone here representing that organization today? They're going to be holding a running festival that crosses through much of Oklahoma City in wards 3, 4, 6, and 7. All right. Larry, you want to make a motion on this, since it goes through Ward 3 partially?
I move for approval.
All right. Cast your votes on item 6A, and that goes through unanimously. Item 6B is a request from the Professional Basketball Club, also known as the Oklahoma City Thunder, to host Thunder Alley, which is on Reno, just to the north of the, the sports arena before many of the Thunder games. Are there representatives for the Thunder here? Come on forward. Are you Karina?
I am.
Good. We'll need your name and address for the record, please.
Karina Henderson, 208 Thunder Drive, Oklahoma City, 73102.
Okay. Anything we need to know, different from, from years past?
Pretty much the same drill as previous years. We're obviously working with the city and any other interested parties on traffic issues related to the downtown construction, parking issues and the like.
All right. And good luck to the Thunder. They play tonight, an exhibition game in Tulsa.
That's right.
And then they'll be home Sunday for the final home exhibition game, and the season starts here in just a couple of weeks. So a lot of people are getting excited about it.
You know my dog, Mayor, because he had a down pat.
You can tell what my schedule revolves around.
Exactly.
Karina, thank you for all the, the Thunder are doing for Oklahoma City. I know a lot of people enjoy Thunder Alley during the season. Is there a motion?
I saw move and go Thunder.
Okay. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Thank you, Karina.
Thank you.
All right. Item 6C is a request with the Susan G. Komen Breast Cancer Foundation to host the Race for the Cure. Looks like we have someone who's here, Alisa Pope. Alisa, come on forward. Good morning. We'll need your name and address for the record.
Good morning. Alisa Pope, 115 Park Avenue, Oklahoma City, 73102.
And tell us about Race for the Cure.
This year, it's our 22nd Race for the Cure, and we are, excuse me, we are actually into our 22nd year, and we have moved the location yet again, but we are still downtown. We moved from Marion Gardens, and this year, we are going to be just across the street over at Bicentennial Park. So pretty excited about the new move, and I think it's a really nice area.
All right. And so if people want to partake, it's October 17th.
It's October 17th.
Is that Saturday?
Yes, this Saturday.
This coming Saturday? And they should show up at the Bicentennial Park, which is in front of the Civic Center?
Yes.
Music Hall? And what time should they be there if they want?
We suggest that people show up who haven't registered for the race to show up about 6:30. People who've registered for the race pretty much already have their packets, and then they can come down and see our local sponsors and partners and partake in opening ceremonies about 8 o'clock.
Well, it's a great cause, and I know you raise a lot of money for it.
Yes.
So thank you for your organizational skills. How about a motion from Ward 6, Councilwoman Meg Sawyer?
Second.
All right. Cast your votes on 6C. It passes unanimously. Thanks.
All right. Thank you.
All right. We'll reassess the council meeting. Convenes the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority. There are six items.
Move the items.
All right. We have a motion in a second on the MFA.
I wanted to mention A, though. It's the contract to demolish the seven fire-damaged buildings. The bids actually came in about $160,000 under what we were estimating, so that's good news, and hopefully this will get things going on that property.
Yeah. We appreciate your work on that. How about a, well, we have a motion, don't we, on the MFA?
Mayor, can I just ask Eric? I just saw Eric come in. I wanted to just check Eric on item C, which is the streetscape on Northwest 10th from Penn to May, and it looked like we were able to receive some federal funds. It was a little unclear, but it looked like we received some federal funds for that project. And I was just trying to be sure that that didn't affect the timeline too much.
So actually, the item that's on for today is just the plan report. Now, we're planning to make application to ACOG for funding, so that's something that will actually happen later this year. If we don't get it, we still do have the funds in place to proceed on the project, but our goal is always to leverage any grants or federal funds that we can.
Well, that's why, on the source of funds, it showed all municipal funds, and I wasn't sure where the federal funds came into play, so.
So we are going to make application to ACOG for those, as we would on a lot of projects like this.
Okay. Good luck. I hope we get them. Thanks.
All right. Cast your votes on the MFA, and it passes unanimously. We'll adjourn the OC-MFA convenes the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority. Three items. All right. Comments on the PPA? All right. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. We'll adjourn the OC-PPA convenes the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust. Two items.
Move the items.
All right. Cast your votes on the EAT. It passes unanimously. We'll adjourn the OCEAT and reconvene the council meeting with the consent docket.
Move the items subject to individual consideration.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Any individual considerations? AU. AU.
Mayor, I had 7Q. Manager, do we have a presentation on 7Q? It's the HUD request, HUD applications.
I don't believe we did.
Okay. Then I'll just mention that. And 7S, Mayor. I did want to mention 7AU as well.
Okay. Ed, you want to get started with item AU?
Well, demolition, I think is going to be a common theme through today's meeting, and I guess we'll start with this one. We've talked about it before. I just want to pull it for a separate vote and one more futile attempt to save the historic building, which is Film Exchange. I, again, at the end of this, 70 acres of blanket demolitions, you'll have the greatest amount of demolitions of historic downtown structures in the last decade and half a century since urban renewal. And I just, I feel like we learned one lesson from urban renewal, which is if you're going to demolish a historic structure, have a plan for what you're going to replace it with. I don't think we learned the other lesson, which is if you're going to blanket demolish every building within a geographic area, there's going to be some of those, there's going to be some things in there you wish that you had saved. And I think we'll wish that we had saved Film Exchange, especially since we're building half a dozen buildings within the park for, because we need buildings in the park. And I have no doubt that we could have used the Film Exchange for one of those buildings, that there would have been help, and that it would have been viable. So I'll just ask that that be pulled for a separate vote. Thanks.
Meg, you want to discuss AU?
Yeah, I just, if I could just make a comment about that. I wanted to remind staff of our commitment to retain the lintel that says Film Exchange on it and the brick that surrounds it, so it can be used in the Film Exchange district.
And David nodded affirmatively.
I saw nodding, and so I think that was a confirmation that we'll save it. Thank you.
And Meg, you want to discuss item Q?
Yes, Mayor. Thank you very much. Item 7Q is an application for HUD funding, HUD, sorry, HUD funding. And it's a, it's a partner agreement with the Department of Commerce for HUD Community Development Block Grants and its National Disaster Resilience Funding. There's a lot of really significant, important things in here, but one of them is a funding request for two projects that are sponsored by Mental Health Association Oklahoma to begin to expand the highly successful housing, low-income housing program, and actually homeless housing programs that exist in Tulsa managed by Mental Health Oklahoma in Oklahoma City. There's a capital campaign underway right now to raise $2 million directly focused on housing, but this HUD money would be additional, and there are two projects that have already been identified. One is the Old Gateway School, and the other is Shepherd Manor Senior Living Center that has been closed for a long time. And so it's, it's a terrific opportunity to bring a model to Oklahoma City that has been highly successful in Tulsa that they and we, the Mental Health Association, are really proud of, and so I'm hoping for lots of success with this.
All right. Thank you. And item S?
And item S is a contract again with the After School Network, and I just wanted to recognize the work, John, I think they're working at Moon Academy. But this is an after-school program that focuses on the important skills of science, technology, engineering, and math. And we've seen a really interesting series of articles in the paper in this last week by Steve Blackmore about job force preparation and lack of quality job force in the state and its implications for our future economic growth, and focusing on STEM education is one of those things that's so important, and our relationship with the public schools and the after-school network is very important. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Any other comments on the consent docket? Ready to vote? Cast your votes. Oh, I am sorry. We needed to vote on that one item separately, and I, I'll, what's the best way for me to correct this? Should we?
We can reconsider and rescind the previous action.
Okay.
And then vote on.
All right. Do I need a motion to reconsider and rescind? How about a motion to reconsider and rescind? All right. Cast your votes on that, and that item is rescinded. Now, how about a motion for the consent docket with the exception of AU?
Second.
Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. And then is there a motion on AU?
Second.
Cast your votes, and it passes 8-1. All right. Nothing on the concurrence today, and that sends us on to item 9, which is a series of items that require a separate vote. We'll start with a series of ABC issues. The first is in Ward 2. The address is 6150 Northwest Grand Boulevard. Ed?
Did anybody sign up to speak? So I'll move for approval.
All right. We have a motion in a second. We're voting on 9A1. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9A2 is an ABC issue in Ward 8 at 1201 Northwest 178 Street. Mark?
Approved by Planning Commission, no protest. I'd move for its approval.
All right. We have a motion in a second. We're voting on 9A2. Cast your votes, and it passes unanimously. Item 9A3 is an ABC issue in Ward 6 at 908 Southwest 4th Street. Meg?
Yes, Mayor. This was, this is actually a new project over in the burgeoning Farmers Market District, another very exciting opportunity. There were no protests at the Planning Commission, and it was approved unanimously. I'd move approval.
All right. We have a motion in a second. We're voting on 9A3. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9A4 is an ABC issue in Ward 8 at 10909 North May. Mark?
Was approved by the Planning Commission, no protest. I'd move for its approval, please.
All right. We have a motion in a second. We're voting on 9A4. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9A5 is a zoning case at Northwest 10th Street. That's in Ward 6, and this would become a downtown business district and add a historic landmark overlay district to it. Meg?
Right. Thank you, Mayor. The purpose of this is to designate the Marion Hotel as a historic landmark, and I hope that the folks have had a chance over the course of the last couple of months to drive by and see that extraordinary renovation that was done. That building, I had a chance to tour probably 15 years ago, and you needed well-eating boots to wade through the pigeon detritus and things. It was, it was barely standing. I'm not sure how the structure was saved, but it's a, it's a fabulous restoration, and it's now, I think, six, no, say, seven, eight, nine, about nine rental units right down at 10th and Broadway. So this is a great opportunity to designate it as a historic landmark, and what that means is now any work done going forward will have to comply with the historic overlay ordinance. So I'd move approval.
All right. We have a motion in a second. We're voting on 9A5. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9A6 is a zoning case in Ward 7 at 927 East Reno. It's currently I3 heavy industrial, and it would be moved to an I1 light industrial district.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Madam Clerk, has anyone signed up to speak? No one has signed up to speak. This is, this application is to build a hotel at this location. I think this is definitely great, as Reno is one of the gateways into the Bricktown area and also the downtown area. So it's definitely good to see something being done in this particular area. With that said, it passed the Planning Commission, and I move for approval.
Second.
All right. We're voting on item 9A6. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9A7 is a zoning case in Ward 1 at 4025 Northwest 63rd Street. It's currently R1 single-family residential, and this would change it to a C3 community commercial district. James?
Yeah. Did anybody sign up? Okay. There's been no protest, unanimous, Planning Commission. I move for approval.
Second.
All right. We have a motion in a second. We're voting on 9A7. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9A8 is a zoning case in Ward 2 at 1140 Northwest 63rd Street. It currently has a variety of zoning positions, and it would become a new HUD if approved. And Ed, we have one person that has signed up to speak.
So I thought, just so I get my bearing, who, from Glenbrook, who else here? Okay. So this, what, do you mind putting the pictures up of the development? And then I'll just, what, this development is basically in the triangle between 63rd to the north, Western on the east, and Grand Boulevard. It's where the Whole Foods is. It's right across from Chesapeake, and then Glenbrook neighborhood is, is immediately to the west. What I might do is just, if the applicant can come, and I can just ask him some questions.
Sure.
The applicant flew in last week and met with the neighborhood. There's been, I met with the neighborhood on Sunday. There's been discussions, and there's really, I think, four main issues that, that are points of contention or just interest. And what I might do is just go through those four and then give the, if you have any additional concerns, I want to make sure that you have every opportunity to get those, get those addressed. This, this is a development which involves some 500 rental apartments on top of commercial development on the first floor, and then additional retail in front of that. At the bottom is the, if any of you, like the Anthropology Store and the Zoey's and things like that, and then, so surface parking lot. So just across from the surface parking lot is the, is Glenbrook neighborhood. So one concern that the neighborhood has is that if you put this kind of density, 500 rental units, what's going to happen with traffic? And could there be spillover parking from all this commercial activity and the 500 This is basically, I think, what, akin to what Chesapeake was originally thinking of when they, when they were starting to move all these different pieces. Although I think in this case, instead of an oil and gas company, we have an experienced developer who's, who I think speaks and is developing with new urbanist design, and I think it's, I think it's a good design where the parking garage, which is four stories?
Four stories of multifamily with a parking garage behind it, so it'd be easy.
The parking garage is wrapped, is being wrapped around by the development, so you can't, you can't see the bulk of it, kind of like the Edge or other developments.[1776.16] can't, you can't see the bulk of it, kind of like the Edge or other developments. And so I, I think it has sufficient parking and I don't think that we're going to see spillover. But I, I would like to, to hear your thoughts on traffic. One other note is that the taxpayers have made an enormous investment in this area to facilitate traffic. We somehow took a million dollars of unlisted funds from the 2007 bond, which I'm still not sure exactly how we did that. But we took a million dollars of the unlisted bond funds and we widened Grand Boulevard across from that surface parking lot. So it's done and it ended up being fortuitous because now you've got this development that it will facilitate. We, we spent 2,000 bond funds widening Western from 63rd to 36th. And I, I've used the entirety of the fund balance allocations, not once but twice, to further make traffic and better widening improvements to Western. And now Eric, for this year's fund balance, is suggesting that we repair 63rd going from Western to Broadway Extension, which got damaged from all the Chesapeake construction. So I think that we, I think that the taxpayers have made significant investments to help facilitate traffic out of here. Could you just, could you address the amount of, the parking, the way that you think traffic will behave and specifically that the neighborhood's concerned that you'll have spillover parking in their neighborhood?
Sure. So just sort of Ken and Marshall.
Did you name an address for the?
Ken Marshall, 180 East Broad Street, Columbus, Ohio. So from a traffic standpoint, Councilman Shadid has talked about the infrastructure improvements that have been made to the, to the nearby roadways. The way we've designed the site is to concentrate the parking and multifamily on the east side of the site where access is most easily arranged from Northwestern and from 63rd. So the idea that even the access off of Northwestern, 63rd would provide, would be provided into the parking deck on the east side of the site. The site gets less density towards the west and obviously residents is there. I mean, I've got our traffic engineer here. If you'd like to hear some of the details about the studies that they've done and working with the city over the years. Our engineer's been involved with this site and these area roadways since 2007 and has done multiple studies. So I can provide that detailed information if you'd like.
Well, I, what I'd like to do, because I, I think inevitably you can't predict exactly how traffic is going to behave. You can, you can use models. But what I'd like to do, if we can as a city, we have all the traffic counters. We've already bought them. It doesn't cost a penny to collect data now. So we could deploy traffic counters on 63rd, on Western, and on Grand and study the baseline traffic behavior now. We can collect 72 hours of data at a time. We can do not only vehicle traffic counts, but we can also monitor the speeds at which the cars are traveling now. And then as the development proceeds, we can collect more data and see how things are changing and then make adaptations. We now have the ability to change the traffic signalization and, and things like that, I think, to facilitate traffic out of there. And so that's what we've discussed with the neighborhood. And I think that they, they appreciate those ideas. And it wouldn't cost anything.
No, we can get baseline traffic counts up there.
Okay. Second is, maybe address the, one thing that came up was water. And there was some homeowners that believed that we didn't have adequate water mains into the development and that you would see pressure drops in the surrounding neighborhoods.
I'm going to allow our engineer to address that question.
Specifically, they, they felt like there wasn't two 12-inch main lines as outlined in here. And so they thought that that was a fatal flaw to the development.
Tim Johnson with Johnson Associates. As Ken mentioned, we've been working in this area, in the surrounding area for 20 years. Specifically, as the development, as everybody knows, this site was previously developed with retail office use, didn't have the same amount of adequate access to Western as the project's proposing. But it also didn't have the utilities that are there now. As you recall, as, as Classen Extension was brought up from south of Northwest Highway, up and around the old railroad right away and cuts across Western at what would be 59th Street, all that infrastructure was brought up and water mains were brought up with it. And with those water mains being brought up with it, it allowed additional interconnect with the Grand Boulevard water main, which I believe is an eight-inch, the 12-inch on Western, and there's an eight-inch on 63rd Street. All of that is looped with additional 12-inch mains that were put in along Classen and Chertel as part of the Chesapeake campus expansion. All of the infrastructure east of Classen was all improved and upgraded as part of that campus expansion, which allows for additional water pressure and flow back to the area. Pressure's not really the issue. It's the flow into the area. So this site not only was adequate before, it is more than adequate now for this type of development.
So we, we as a city are just responsible for delivering water at a pressure of 25 PSI and then the developer takes it from there. They do all the water infrastructure within the development to deliver whatever pressure they're going to do with, to the...
That's correct. We, we will be responsible for any main extensions within the interior of the project to adequately serve these buildings for fire protection. That's going to be the biggest demand. And if we have to put in a house pump, for example, to raise the pressure, that's what developers do. And this is in a high spot in the city. It has adequate pressure now, but as we go up five floors, we'll probably have to have a house pump in the fire, in the parking garage to serve the fire suppression flows, which is very common.
Okay, thank you. So the third area that we spent a good deal of time talking on Sunday was about signage. And I think part of this PUD is specifically electronic signs are prohibited. Can we, can we talk just for a second about what, what the nature of the signs will be? I know that they're, they're limited to basically 50 square feet and a height of 25 feet. The neighborhood has concerns that you're going to see sign after sign after sign, like Walmart signs or along May Avenue, something of that nature. So...
Correct. David Box, 522 Callcord Drive. My client, Glimcher, owns the Classen Curve, the Triangle, and Nichols Hills Plaza. Part of their desire and goal with the development of this site is to bring that theme of signage that the Triangle and Classen Curve has to go throughout. So the goal is, the sign is really an architectural feature and the signage, the words, would be minimal. And so their goal, like I said, is to, to keep that architectural theme going from what they already have. And so we mirrored the language that you see in the Classen Curve PUD and the Triangle PUD is the same language that appears here. And again, we did agree to eliminate the EMB signage.
Okay. Fourth was, was just design. I think there's concern that, like the Anthropology Building was, you almost take textbook of everything you should do to encourage pedestrians and excitement, and they did the opposite. I mean, you had a huge setback. You had a blank building with no, with no windows. And so I guess what, what could you say to reassure the neighborhood that you're not going to see a repeat of some of those poor design?
Sure. I think, you know, we have developed mixed-use projects all across the country. We've got a project in Scottsdale, Arizona, that really has helped us understand how to best relate to our customers in providing exciting and dynamic storefronts that showcase the retailers that are there and their wares and also enliven the space. So we're very cognizant and focused on making sure that the pedestrian environment we're providing and the way the buildings address that are appropriate and good quality.
Okay. I might just ask the neighborhood representative, do you have additional questions or other thoughts?
I just want a few minutes.
Yep, absolutely. Yes, now.
And this got done, oh, my name, Sharon Newold, and I live at 1201 Glenbrook Drive. This document got done at about 10 o'clock PM. And so I didn't have a chance to get, I was just hoping that it could be given to the city council people. And I have extra copy. I'll make sure to you. First of all, we just wanted to thank the following individuals. We appreciate that Ken Marshall spoke with the neighborhood. That meant a lot to us. And we also appreciate the multiple meetings with Tim Johnson and David Box. I also want to say thank you to Janice Powers, even, I don't know that she's here today, because she, she followed up after the Planning Commission meeting with me and raised the kind of work and process issues that I had questions on. And I appreciate her giving me the time. As well as Lance Gross, he provided me with updated documents in a real timely basis. And then finally, we really learned a lot from our meeting with Councilman Shadid and Traffic Commissioner Rob Littlefield. They really kind of gave us a sense of what's coming down in the future for the neighborhood as well as what are available remedies to us now. And so we're very grateful that they spoke to us. I'm going to just go real quickly through this. A lot of this Councilman Shadid has referenced. The, the neighborhood, really, one of the key issues was concerned about the number of rental units, that it's 500, the impact on traffic. We appreciate that the city is open to the counters. And, and so we were going to officially request that today, but it sounds like we don't have to officially request it because it's going to happen. And again, anything that can be done to divert traffic away from Grand would be appreciated. The parking, I, I think personally I was more comforted after realizing that the city has available some remedial actions if people cross over into the neighborhood. Rob Littlefield pointed out all the things that went on in his neighborhood that the city was very proactive on. And so we appreciate that that's available to us. The aesthetics, we have people that have out-of-state homes that are very high-end. And Bill, I didn't know if you wanted to say anything more about that?
Yes.
Okay. And then notification procedure, I talked to Janice about having like a point person in the neighborhood that when site plans and other things come up before the city, if we could be notified. And she said to let city staff know. So I've let Lance know that, but I think I'd like to be tagged as that person and then I'll make sure the rest of the neighborhood knows. Because I'm in that 300 radius and the rest of the neighborhood isn't in that, so they don't get the notification. And then miscellaneous, and this came up really, I live in the condos and the, I think it was still owned by Chesapeake, but there was a while where we were having a lot of dust and debris come to our condos because that land was not being watered. And so Councilman Shadid pointed out that we have remedies, if during construction there's debris or dust, that there's elements in the code that we can make ourselves available to. And candidly, I think we probably will if that goes on. And then, and I've, we've already talked to Ken about this. We hope as the progress goes along, that security issues and privacy issues and lighting issues, if there's a need to visit, we can. So that's really, it's all embedded in this document. And again, I want to thank you for your time.
Can I?
See, I actually signed up to speak. I don't know if they didn't bring the note for the auction. I'm sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
May I?
My name is Robyn Nasoff. My address is 1317 Glenbrook Drive. My husband and I own four properties in the Glenbrook area. Three are presided in by family members and one is a rental property. I had a chance to look at the documentation and my concerns go more to the fact that so many variances are being given without studies. The parking situation, although it may be remedied in some degree by the parking garage, you're looking at a 15% reduction in the parking that would be allocated for 500-unit residents that are two and three-bedroom. So you may have two car families there. I, I have serious concerns with the carte blanche, you know, deviation from the required parking for that unit of being 15% less. Then they're also getting 15% reduction in parking for the commercial component. That's a total of 30% reduction. This HUD's also requesting, you know, rezoning from just commercial to residential. They're requesting a variance so that there's not a setback, so that the lot, the buildings can be built right against the sidewalk. I've lived in this neighborhood long enough to know that after the Chesapeake construction happened, we had heavy rains. We had flooding on Western. The Metro Restaurant has suffered from flooding. Nothing has been done to give us a, a study as to what will the impact be of this dense structure in this area as far as flooding, runoff, drainage, and, you know, concerns there. Councilman Shadid spoke about the issues we have with water. The Planning Commission had the requirement that they connect to two 12-inch water mains. We've heard that there's one 12-inch water main. There's a deficiency there that hasn't been addressed. We don't know what the, the traffic impact will be or the impact on the neighborhood. We're going to study the problem and fix it perhaps after it's occurred. My concern is if we build these things as they're requesting, if they're built as requested and there's not adequate parking there, how are we going to undo that? How are we going to correct that? You have the opportunity to correct it now and to ask for those studies to be performed now. The municipal code at section 16.4 says that where you have a, a storm drain which runs right through this property, there's a storm drain there, that they shall perform those studies. They shall design the property to take into account how that storm drain will be affected. Those studies just haven't been done. I'm asking the city council to look to its municipal code and to enforce the provisions of that code and ask that these studies be done to protect the surrounding neighborhood in our city. Thank you.
Yeah, or Tim, can you address the drainage?
Oh, Tim can address the drainage real briefly. On the, it's, the reduction of parking is a, is a 15%. It's not a 15 plus 15 to 30. And you have to meet certain criteria. And it's actually one of the goals of the, the Planning Department to encourage development like this, to, to get away from the sea of surface parking. That's what it's intended to do. And, you know, my client is a retail developer first and foremost. So they are keenly aware of the number of parking they will need to serve this retail. But the goal is we've got more than adequate parking within that structure to serve it. So we're taking it from, you know, from the street fringe and putting it in that structure. And that there are no variances required in this PUD. We do meet the code.
Again, Tim Johnson, briefly about the drainage. Back when this was, property was owned by Chesapeake, you'll recall, we enclosed an open channel, put it in a box culvert. All those studies were performed and approved by the city. The box culvert was constructed. Not only was it requirement by the city, we also had to have a full 404 permit to put a lid on that structure all the way to where it's still open there by, behind Whole Foods. So those studies were done. Those studies will be used to establish minimum finished floors for any new structures in the project.
Thank you. I, I just, did anybody else sign up?
No.
I, I just think, you know, we've, we've got to build some mixed-use development like this in the city. And we've got to get away from, from having traffic and parking requirements, I think, dictate the design. I think it's done tremendous damage in the city. And, and I don't think it should, should dictate our design. I do want to ask one last question of Ken. Because to me, what we're trying to get developed in the city is areas where people will walk and there'll be less need for cars. They can walk to Chesapeake if they work there. You've got enough retail and things that, there are things that you can, can walk to. We know from data in, in cities across America, using things like the Walk Score, the zero-to-100 scoring system, that if you can increase the Walk Score in an area by, by 10 points, you basically increase the property values by 10%. It infuses, good walking is good business. And hopefully this is, is going to do that. And to just be tied to some of the, the parking requirements, even a 15% reduction, it's a 15% reduction from something that I think is outlandish and way too high to start with. So I think 15% reduction makes it much more reasonable. But I do want, just something that's important to me, I just want to end on this note. I mean, ideally, these are the kind of things, the developments that as we move towards thinking about a regional transit authority, which may or may not have a stop nearby with, with rail, or that we could get people living here onto, onto public transit. This is the kind of development that I think would facilitate that. We're also talking about bus rapid transit shooting from this area down Classen to downtown. So can you talk about maybe your thoughts on incorporating a, a bus stop that, that may help facilitate that? Or maybe your discussions with COPTA?
Yeah. So we've had preliminary discussions with the, the Transit Authority on, you know, best locations for a potential bus stop that could service our facility is maybe better serviced the Chesapeake facilities. Right now, there's sort of a bus stop that's here, it's sort of a minimalist design. We've talked about there's some location close to this intersection where we've got a signalized intersection where we've got sort of safe pass if you cross into the Chesapeake instance, where we could incorporate some sort of bus stop that maybe would be just more than just a simple canopy. Maybe it has a little bit more design to it and provides a little more shelter for the people that would be using it accessing our project as well as Chesapeake. So we've had those discussions and are, you know, certainly committed to continuing those with the...
And, and I very much appreciate that. I mean, thoughts of, of more than just a bus bench or just a bare bones, but something that's cool, that has real-time traffic information, that, that is maybe an architectural piece, will attract the young professionals, will attract riders to our public transit system. So I appreciate consideration of that. With that, if there's any other thoughts or...
Hey, just one brief comment. There are two articles that have been published recently addressing the growing interest in municipalities, especially those in the western part of the... in municipalities, especially those in the western part of the country, to eliminate the, the traditional number of parking spaces per square footage for many retail restaurants. I need to share that with the council because they're trying to get away from that, that for, you know, a particular size of a facility, you have to have so many restaurants just to accommodate the growing trend in public transportation, walking, biking. Hopefully, it's an encouraging sign that the emphasis on automobile transportation is beginning to slow down a little bit, if nothing else, so I don't see it as a problem.
Thank you.
The reduction in parking.
Anybody else? All right. Ed, you want to make a motion? Cast your votes, passes unanimously.
On item 9A9, it's a zoning case in Ward 7, it's on Northwest 109th Street, it's currently R1 single-family residential, and it would be a new spud if approved. John?
All right, thank you. I see that the applicant is present, the, there's no protest, has anyone signed up? No one has signed up. The Planning Commission did approve this item, I move for approval.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Cast your votes, it passes unanimously. Item 9A10 is a zoning case in Ward 2 at 1226 Northwest 32nd Street. It's currently inside of a simplified plan unit development, and it would be a new spud if approved. Ed?
This is to, to make housing out of shipping containers, which I think is, the more diversity of housing stock, the better. There's no protest, passed the Planning Commission unanimously. Eric, unless you have something to add, I'd move for approval.
This is, takes care of that, I guess. Just really don't want to hear from me today, do you?
All right. You want us to vote, Eric?
Yes, please.
All right, cast your votes, passes unanimously. Item 9B is a ordinance here for an auto dealership, this is in Ward 7 at 13002 North Kelly Avenue, it's currently in a PUD, and it would be a new PUD if approved. John?
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Madam Clerk, has anyone signed up to speak? No one has signed up to speak, but however, we do have the applicant present, I'm going to ask the applicant to please come in, come up and explain this particular application. The Planning Commission did deny this particular application mainly because of the height of the sign, so if the word applicant, if you would explain the signage and so forth.
We'd be happy to. David Box, 522 Call Core Drive, here on behalf of the applicant. As Councilman Pettis said, well, we went to Planning Commission for a couple of reasons. When we originally came through a year and a half ago, the site had a completely different design, and my client, through its negotiations with various product brands, has decided to change the way in which the site was going to be developed under the old PUD. Instead of having a big body shop here in the middle that was going to face south of the turnpike, it's now likely going to be developed as you see here. Additionally, we had to change some of the landscaping requirements to buffer the cemetery to the north. That was a big issue in the first PUD, and my client and the representative of the cemetery continue to work on those issues, and what you see here is actually the agreement reached with the cemetery and my client. It's much more substantial than what was agreed to in the old PUD, but what was then on the ground was inconsistent with the PUD, so we needed to modify that. What we, what we added is this one sign on the Kilpatrick, and as you know, the Bob Moore brand has multiple other dealerships on the other side of Kelly. And the goal is, this sign can serve as a, as a gateway into all the different product lines that they have. The sign, as you see here, will match the design and architecture of the signs they have on the Broadway extension. It is 60-foot in height, and while that seems significant, it's important to note, this site sits low. And when you look at Kelly, there are signs, I believe there are two signs that are at 60 feet, and there's at least one sign that's at 70 feet. So the, the height requirement that we're asking for here is certainly consistent with what you see out there. Two signs that'll be on North Kelly, that'll be one per dealership, are 41 and 38 feet tall. One of the requests from staff was that we agree to the, the old requirements, and we did agree to that. So we agreed to keep the 41 and the 38, but we do need the 60 because of some height issues with the, the turnpike and the site. So with that, we think we have a reasonable application. I think it's a great local company that'll allow them to display the product brands that they have, not just on this site, but over Kelly Avenue, which you couldn't otherwise see the way that the turnpike meanders.
So is the only change the sign?
The sign, the landscaping, we've got significant changes in the way that the, the site was going to be developed. The old site plan had a large body shop right here, there was multiple overhead doors facing south towards the turnpike, that was a problem. And so now they have different opportunities with different product lines, and you could have a, a test track here, I don't know if you can see that, that outline, but there's things that they want to do on this site now that were not accounted for in the old PUD.
All right, Meg?
David, when I read the memo, it sounded like the Planning Commission was a little frustrated perhaps that this application had come before them not very long ago, and now we're coming back asking for changes.
It was, and in fact, I think somebody used the word disingenuous, that I certainly took exception, and so did my client. You know, things change, conditions change, every property owner has a right to spend their $2,700 to file an application for, for a PUD, as they did here. And what they found is, they need the ability for traffic coming in from the west to display, excuse me, from the east, to display all the different product lines they have, because as you come in, all you see are these two buildings, and then you see the other dealership, the other company that has dealerships out there, you see the 70-foot Toyota, you see, I think, a Nissan sign, and so Bob Moore, to be competitive for what his competitors have, needs something to display all the different product lines they have. But yeah, the, the Planning Commission had concern, but, you know, it's, it's no different than any other property owner, things change, we couldn't do it in an administrative fashion, so it forces to go through a rezoning process.
Are there any residential areas that may be affected by the sign? Residents complaining about the sign?
No, sir.
And you're, you're telling me is because of topography, the land sits down, you need the 70 feet, and the, the turnpike's elevated, is that correct?
Yes, sir. 60 feet and yes, sir.
And then, and there is no objection by the cemetery, they, they agree with your landscaping?
Absolutely. In fact, they objected to the old PUD, and because my client and them came to an agreement and planted the trees as you see here, they are in complete agreement with the PUD.
Okay, thank you.
So there was no protest.
Thank you.
Now, in regards to the sign, it would just be Bob Moore's products along that same area, correct?
Yes, sir. In fact, I'll, I'll read you the language. We were very conscientious to make sure that the language was very restrictive, and so what we say is, the display area shall be limited to the names of businesses within this PUD, and in addition, other auto dealerships owned and operated by the developer of this PUD, but which are not located within this PUD, so i.e. those adjacent properties.
Okay. With that said, since there is no protest, I'm going to go ahead and move for approval.
Second?
All right. Motion and a second. Cast your votes, it passes 8-1.
Thank you.
Item 9B2 was also recommended for denial at the Planning Commission, it's in Bricktown at 11 East Reno, 101 North Oklahoma Avenue, and a series of other spots inside Bricktown, which is in Ward 7. John, you want to lead us through this?
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Madam Clerk, has anyone signed up to speak? I see that the applicant is present, the Planning Commission did deny this particular application, but however, there has been some unique changes along the way from when it came to Planning Commission and to its current state. At one point in time, there, there were many protests, and now there's not protests. Ken, we're going to ask the applicant, if you will, explain this particular, what we have in front of us.
Sure. Again, for the record, David Box, 522 Call Core Drive, here on behalf of the applicant, also with me is, is Tim Johnson. To start, as Councilman Pettis said, when we came through originally, we had multiple signs on top of parking kiosks that are, that you see here, they were bulky-looking, they were just square EMD signs on top of the kiosk. And in addition, there was a very large EMD sign on top of one of the buildings, the Jim Brewer building. In working with the Bricktown Association, it became clear that the, the sign on top of the building was a big problem, so we deleted that request. And in addition, the design of this, I think, left something to be desired from multiple people. And so what we did was, we set out to find a way to make everybody happy, part of which was working with the Bricktown Association. What we now have is a architectural beam in which the EMD sign will be vertical, as you see here, it'll be much smaller in size, it's 32 square feet, and it'll be encased in an architectural element. Then we set out to find some restrictions on the content. That was another big concern by the association and by stakeholders. And so what we've done is, we have limited the sign content to only allow things that will promote the Bricktown district. In addition, we have donated 20% of the content time to Downtown Oklahoma City, Inc., and the Bricktown Association. We've refined the times in which that display can happen. That display was, is going to be from 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM, 20% of that time will be the Bricktown, or excuse me, Downtown Oklahoma City and the Bricktown Association. Additionally, we've limited the hours, we have, we've really tried hard, and I think Councilman Pettis referenced it, to make this a, a good thing for not just my client, but for the whole district. And I think we have that now. The association has withdrawn, their objection is now in support, I believe stakeholders are now in support. I think that they believe that this is going to be a, a good opportunity to promote the district, promote events and activities that are going to be happening within the district. And, and as I said, 20% of that time is going to be donated to, to those groups, to run in those prime hours. So with that, we, we've come a long way, and now we have no protest, and I think what you have is, is a good product, that'll be good for the entertainment district in this city.
David, how many specific locations are involved here?
Three.
Okay. I see them on the map here, I just want to make sure there weren't others that are involved.
All right, thank you.
Are these, are these video, or is this just information?
It, it has the, the capability of both. Obviously, some, some of the runtime will be, you know, parking, so instead of the sandwich board sign, you could put parking, but then you also display event similar to what we have at the Civic Center, you know, for the city, promoting events and things like that.
Yeah. I, I mean, I, I think this is a slippery slope, but at the same time, you know, I think one of the biggest parking issues in Bricktown is that people don't know where they can park. It's a, it's a lack of information. So I, I do think we need to communicate better about parking in Bricktown, but at the same time, we don't want to be adding billboards into Bricktown. And so I guess that's what I'm trying to, trying to clearly figure out, is this a billboard or is this a sign that's going to be beneficial to, to our visitors?
Sure. And where we started was the former. It was very concerned that we're introducing billboards. And I firmly believe now, with the language that we have, it is so restricted that it's not a billboard. You know, it is only going to be able to promote and display events and, and activities that happen within that Bricktown district. And that, I believe, is the only reason that the association and the stakeholders finally came on board.
Yeah, okay.
David, I really appreciate the work that you've done, you know, I think it is a lot better. I'm on the side of really slippery.
Sure.
And I, I just, you know, want to say I really appreciate the changes that you've made to it, and I do think it's better. I, I just, I, I'm concerned about a lot of LED signage in Bricktown.
Oh, and absolutely, and you know, that's what I think, that was probably the biggest points of discussion that we had, and that dominated most of the time. And ultimately, I think where the folks fell is, you know, if, if there's any precedent set by this, and there's not, each zoning case, you know, stands on its own merits, as restricted as this is, this wouldn't be a bad deal. I mean, this isn't going to open the door to, to much bigger and, and more content that we would be concerned about.
David, you left out the process, if the council approves
Yes.
this particular application, does this item go back in front of the Bricktown Review, Design Review Committee?
Yes, I apologize, I did forget that. As part of the, the negotiations with the stakeholders and the association, one of the things they wanted to make sure that the Bricktown Design Committee still had control of was the design element of it. So in our PUD, we are required to go back and get a CA from the Bricktown Design Committee on the design of this structure. And that was another point, I think, that satisfied them, that they had another, they had another crack at it, and they could dictate some of the design elements.
Okay, yeah. So what, the Planning Commissioners, what was their main complaint at the end of the day?
Uh, signage, you know, signage is, is a, a difficult discussion at Planning Commission every other Thursday.
But is it precedent, is it precedent for other people that will want the signage, these people get it, and now somebody else wants it, is that their problem?
No, I, I don't think so. I, I think that was a concern of some of the stakeholders, I don't think that was a concern at Planning Commission. Planning Commission, I think it was just, you know, it's signage. We really didn't get into a detailed conversation about everything that, that has happened and everything we're willing to restrict.
Now, if, before I make my motion, can we get Aubrey in here for just a minute?
I'm sure we can.
Hi. This one question, this question deals with policy within the, the Bricktown area. Can you please explain the Planning Department's plans to create some type of signage policy or, or plan?
Sure. We've done many studies about the Bricktown area in the past, which have identified the need to do a signage and wayfinding master plan for Bricktown. So our department is teeing that project up, we're going to be working with lots of different stakeholders in Downtown OKC, Inc., to do that, and the intent is that the Bricktown Urban Design Committee would have a master plan that could identify the types of signage that could help visitors going into Bricktown, types of signage like gateway signage, directional wayfinding signage, so that Bricktown doesn't experience an oversaturation of signage, but it's done in appropriate places. I ran over here, I'm sorry.
Oh, that's okay.
I'm out of breath. So as soon as we have that signage wayfinding master plan created, the committee can adopt that for reference, so that if there are future applications that come forward for individual sites to do non-accessory signs, to advertise things outside of their specific business, they could reference that master plan. So I think that that process could eliminate a lot of the concern about this, setting a precedent, and that every business would then have LED, uh, non-accessory signs.
What is the timeframe on the policy?
We think, we can have it done within six months.
Okay, thank you. With all that being said, I do want to thank the applicant and also the protesters. We met for almost, felt like, three hours discussing this particular item to get, to get it where it is now. With that said, and also I do want to thank planning staff for their work to try to develop a framework of signage in the Bricktown area. With that said, I move for approval.
All right, comments or questions on item 9B2? Cast your votes, passes 8-1.
Thank you.
Item 9C is a request for a, a street closure on Northeast 34th Street. John, you okay with this?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Has anyone signed up, Madam Clerk? No one has signed up. With that said, Mr. Mayor, I move for approval.
All right, cast your votes, 9C.
And I do want to comment, this particular item will allow the Railroad Museum to expand a part of their operation. All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Item 9D is a couple of items that come to us from the Traffic Commission. The first is from Ward 5, and it would put in a parking restriction on Southwest 125th Street. David?
Yeah, I'd need approval.
All right, comments or questions on 9D1? All right, cast your votes, it passes unanimously. Item 9D2 would remove a couple of reserved parking spaces on North Hudson, it's in Ward 6. Meg?
This came to us with regard to, I'm sorry, I didn't have my, my on, to remove some parking around the construction site at Walker and Sheridan, and I would move approval.
All right, we have a motion and a second, we're voting on 9D2. Cast your votes, it passes unanimously. Item 9E is an item that's been introduced to council, and we've held a public hearing, it's up for final hearing today, and this has to do with some hotel registration data. Is there a motion on 9E? All right, comments or questions from anyone on 9E? All right, cast your votes, passes unanimously. Item 9X- Is there a motion on 9E?
All right, comments or questions from anyone on 9E?
All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 9F was introduced two weeks ago, and this is a public hearing today. It has to do with our Parking and Recreation Department. We have one person that has signed up to speak. Phyllis, you want to come forward? Good morning, Phyllis. We'll ask you to keep your comments to three minutes or less.
Thank you.
You pull the microphone down, and give us your name and address, please.
Thank you. My name is Phyllis Dragus. If that name sounds familiar to you, my son was Officer Jonathan Dragus. He was killed in the line of duty 10 years ago, as of next week. I only bring that up for one reason, because Jonathan would be standing here with me, he would be so excited about the developments for Oklahoma City and what is in store for our future, and that's why I'm here. So really, what I want to do, I want to introduce you to an organization called Oklahoma Equestrian Trail Riders Association. We're a statewide organization, and we work with all facilities, we work with city municipalities, we work with the federal government, we work with counties, to help develop trail systems throughout the state of Oklahoma. We have many, many success stories, such as Roberts Cave State Park, Cedar Lake, down at Tallahena. And what, the reason why I want to introduce myself is because we would like to become part of the conversation concerning developing a horseback riding facility or horseback riding on the river. We have a lot of information that we can contribute. We also have what we call a Trail Riders Ambassador Program. And what that is about is that we have ambassadors at all the different park areas throughout the state of Oklahoma. And when there are needs seen by either the municipalities or the National Park Service, many times we provide grants toward facilitating these areas and developing these areas. So basically, that's what I'm here for. I just would like to become part of the conversation, part of a committee. I served on the Parks Board for the City of Guthrie for years, and whatever would take, but mainly, we're just extremely happy and extremely impressed with where our city is going. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Phyllis. Appreciate your involvement.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else here to speak as part of the public hearing in relationship to this ordinance on Item 9F? All right, how about a motion then to move it forward?
Mayor, may I just, well, maybe let's get a motion. I'd make a motion to approve.
Okay, all right.
And I could just ask a quick question. Kenny, maybe for you, and Larry, I think, or you've talked to Larry Bros about this subject, I think, at Crystal Lake, and I just wanted to be sure, our agreement with the management of Crystal Lake is with City Care?
Yes.
Will they have the authority to approve any equestrian activity out there?
I'd have to go back, I believe that's to be true, that they would. Doug's nodding his head.
Okay, Doug, thank you. I know that you'd had a conversation as well. There was just some concern, I think, on, on part of City Care about mixing children with horses that they didn't introduce themselves. I mean, they do have a program to, with horses on lead and various things, but I think he was concerned about, you know, people just showing up in the middle of one of their, his kids' activities.
If I might, Doug Copper, Director of Parks and Recreation. It really is because Crystal, or City Care at Crystal Lake wants to be able to offer that opportunity, even with the horses on a lead.
Right.
That's still an illegal act unless you approve the ordinance at the final reading. So it, it's really in response to City Care wanting to provide that opportunity to teach another outdoor element like canoeing and fishing that they've already started. They wanted to be able to teach horseback riding, and it was with that in thought. It's not so that people can go ride their horses around Crystal Lake. They still control that circumstance. It was really based on the fact that they want to be able to offer that opportunity that we, we are proposing, and we also wanted to take the opportunity to work with organizations like you just heard from, to try to get our horse capital out on our, on specific equestrian trails and not our paved trails, which people are doing illegally now.
Great. I just really wanted to be clear that Crystal Lake had some level of control over.
They control, they control that real estate, and it's through their programming only.
Perfect. Thank you very much, Doug.
This is, really is a specific allowance than it is not to open up anyone with a horse and, and the will to start riding along our trail system.
That is correct, sir. They have to have a permit, it will be a permitted situation, and only once we establish equestrian trails in the future. We have nothing at that, at this point in time. This will be by permit only.
Okay.
Unestablished. But it's not solely for, for Crystal Lake. There are others that have approached us and approached the River Trust to have other, and, and so it's, it's covering the Crystal Lake situation and setting the stage to allow for others, other opportunities.
Okay, so it is broader than Crystal Lake?
Yes, sir. It's so that we have the opportunity. Currently, it is completely illegal on the river, and we want to make sure that we have the tools available to pursue other recreational opportunities on River Trust lands. But again, it's on, where we will design equestrian trails for that specific purpose.
Okay. Thanks, Doug, for that clarification. Any other comments or questions here? This will be moved forward if approved, and it would be up for a final vote in two weeks. Is that right, Francis?
Correct.
Okay. We have a motion in a second already, is that correct?
Correct.
All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9G is a public hearing. This is an item that was introduced two weeks ago, and it has to do with the criteria for downtown demolition. Is there anyone here that has hope to speak on Item 9G today? All right, Ed, you want to speak?
So the final vote will be in two weeks. I'll be at the Rail Evolution Meeting in, in two weeks. You should have a shorter meeting. But I will, let me just address, you know, because this, this got a lot of pushback from the Planning Commission. They, they sent it back for revision twice. They basically shelved it at, at one point. And their concerns are basically the same as mine, is that this whole, like, the Economic Review Committee that's going to be formed by this, by this ordinance in, in the case of demolition applications. And I guess, first I would say, it can't be any worse than the present. I mean, you just, it just can't. So anything is going to be better than the way it is now, where somebody just kind of comes in and, they may say, like, as in the bus station, say one thing to the Downtown Design Review Committee and give completely different numbers to the Board of Adjustment, and nobody asks any questions, and you really don't have any discussion about the economic viability unless you go to court. And then you had a really good discussion. And what I'm imagining is that you would have the discussion that we had in court at this Economic Review Committee, where you really get into the numbers and look at economic viability. But it's, it's basically, they're all appointed by you, Jim. I guess three, three people would be appointed by you. How do you, I, I think you understand my, my concern, is that somebody could come in and play a wildly inflated price, right, and then they protest everyone, well, it's not economically viable, because I can't make the numbers work to turn it into a retail thing, so I've got to demolish it. So who, how would you see this committee working? Who, what kinds of individuals, with what kind of background, would you see appointing to this committee?
I think it was left specifically open so that we can appoint a panel that would be germane to the specifics of the demolition request. So the Bus Depot criteria would be different than, than the First National Committee, or the Gold Dome, if that was, if we, get it though, by the way, I played for coming down, but, but there was talk on the Gold Dome at one time to, to do that. And I think that the specific review of the economics of those would be different than, than other projects that are out there. But I think you're talking about architects and, and real estate professionals would be involved in it, and maybe some other specialty consultants as needed.
So I guess, I guess my concern, or my, I just want to put it out there. We can craft these ordinances in any way which we want to, but ultimately, it boils down to the appointments to the committees. Who's on the Downtown Design Review Committee? Who's on the Board of Adjustment? Who's on this Economic Review? And fair or not, the perception is out there, is that we have gone through this decade, and we've, we've demolished a tremendous number of buildings, that generally those that are appointed err, towards demolition. I mean, we really haven't had, I don't know why David Wanzner wasn't reappointed, but I've heard from at least a dozen or two dozen in different directions, that the perception is that because he voted against the India Temple demolitions, that he wasn't reappointed. I, I have no idea of that, why he wasn't reappointed, but there's so, the perception is reality, and I've heard that from so many people out in the community. I think there's a perception that if you want to get appointed to these committees, you know, if you're anti-demolition, you're probably not going to get reappointed. So I'm just throwing that out there. I'm not, I'm not saying that that's legitimate. I'm just saying that I've heard it from so many different people that...
I'm not relishing the opportunity to appoint these committees, because that will be controversial, and I will be put up to criticism on this.
Right.
So I will have to be very careful as I go forward on that, and, and do my best to make it fair, because I, this is not a particularly responsible building that I'm looking forward to, but I'll certainly take on.
Yeah, okay. Thanks.
If this ordinance had been in place when the plans were underway to do the park, would it have required an in-depth look at the buildings located in the park property to determine whether or not they were, they could have been blended into the park? You know, I know there's this, we kind of gave lip service to the fact that we did it, but we did it in the same way we did Bicentennial Park. I mean, we just said, well, that's something we ought to think about, and then we took a bulldozer and bulldozed it all down. I mean, I don't, as, as far as I know, there was no real analysis of how you do that. I think the same thing, it appears that the same thing happened in the park. I believe, for example, I believe the park could have been designed with the idea that there are some buildings in the park that could have continued to fit. The Citadel at, that Salvation Army had, I think is one of those buildings. I think the Film Exchange Building is one of those buildings. It's too late now, because the plan is already several million dollars down the road. But I believe, had we analyzed every building there and determined, could the park have been built with the idea in mind that this could have been a functional piece of the park? I think the park would be very different, and it would be a combination of the people, of the views of the people that think like I do, and like I probably did, and some of the others may also, that there is value to historical preservation. And the, the value is beyond just how much does it cost? If that had have been the criteria, criteria, when we decided to save the Skirvin, the bulldozers would have bulldozed it over. The other criteria were brought to bear, and that is, what's the significance of this building to Oklahoma City? I think we'll use that, that kind of thought, in fact, I know we're going to use it, we're already talking about doing it for the First National Center. But I, I don't think a building has to rise to the historical significance of the First National Bank building or the Skirvin Hotel to be in that category. I think there are other buildings that could have been repurposed that we're now tearing them down. And I just, I, I think, I've always thought part of it's my age. I mean, I remember things that happened in some of those places that maybe some of the other people that are looking at them don't remember. You know, I remember a value and a, and a, an economic activity going on in some of those buildings. I just like to think that this is a step in the direction of a longer look at the demolition of, of older buildings. I mean, I will tell you, if, if the city had not been willing to put all the money we're putting into the 21C museum, it was, that couldn't have been repurposed for that purpose. It had to be, it had to have been a warehouse and eventually have been torn down. But because for a lot of factors, we decided that building's worth saving. And I, I'm glad we did. I mean, I'm glad we're saving it. I'm not sure I'm in agreement with how much money we're putting into it, but I'm glad we're saving it. And I, and I think there are, I could name you a half dozen buildings and places that we've just bulldozed, that I don't believe that historical value, sentimental value, long-term relationship with the, with the, with the, with what's here, with the structure of this city, has been looked at. I've said that three times, haven't I? Twice? Okay, that's not bad for me. That's not bad for me. I'll quit. I'll quit. I probably did it twice. But I, I want to go back to my first question. Will this ordinance, if it's passed, will it make it more difficult to just tear down things without a, a, a serious effort being made to see if that could be? But the park, I think, is the most, in my mind, is, is the biggest area where we should have done that. I, I can think about three buildings in that park that I just can't believe we're going to push over. And in fact, some of them are already pushed over. Would this, would this cause us to make a longer and harder look at that problem?
This process was not to come up to make it more difficult or easier. It was to establish criteria, that was a fair criteria in the evaluation process, so all could be evaluated on a similar process, and we'd have a legally defendable process to go forward with. Aubrey, my...
You're going to appoint the, it's the city manager that appoints the people, this committee that looks at these?
Yes.
Will you promise me you appoint at least one bleeding heart preservationist to the, the committee?
I, I will.
Because I think that, I, I'm being, I'm being facetious a little bit, but I'm, I'm serious. I mean, that's a side that needs to be represented. The dollar and cents side, it'll take care of itself.
I'd be happy to consider any recommendations you may have for that.
All right, thank you.
Aubrey, can I ask you a question? Because I thought one of the best things the judge did was do a tour of the building that was going to be demolished in the bus station example. And I think we, I can't remember if that got incorporated into this. Is there provision for, like, the DDRC or to tour that which would be demolished?
Yeah, it's not specifically articulated in the ordinance that they must do that, but we encourage DDRC members to tour every site, that they look at every building and every project and every case.
Right.
Oftentimes, on demolitions, they do want to go out and take a tour of the building. And to Councilman White's point, the criteria, the five criteria that are established in this ordinance were done so in a way that each one of those criteria that is presented as the defense or the case that's going to make the case for the applicant to demolish the building, has to be presented in a way that makes sense to the committee. There are no weights placed on those criteria, so the committee has the purview to weigh historic significance or to weigh the effect of the urban context for every single one of those decisions that's made. So if economic feasibility is one of the arguments, it's countered against all these other factors. So I think what this does is it sets up a framework for a comprehensive discussion about the demolition that can be weighed and factored with all the inputs that we've heard in past cases. But now, these are criteria with measurable and defensible burdens of proof that either our staff report articulates, or the applicant must come and articulate. The Economic Review Committee is not something that always has to be called upon only when the Economic Review criteria is evoked by the applicant. And we did make an agreement that the Design Review Committees could nominate people or suggest names that could be placed on a shortlist, that the city manager could pull from that list of, of qualified people, which is articulated in the ordinance, what their qualifications and credentials must be, to, to decide on any given case.
Well, I'm not lobbying for a slot on the, but, but I would say that if, if, it has to be broader, I'm going to say this for the third time, it has to be broader than economic feasibility. It must be. And, and at least twice that I, that I'm aware of, that that has not been the sole criteria. That was not the sole criteria for the Skirvin, and it is not going to be the sole criteria for the First National Bank. But those aren't the only two buildings in Oklahoma City that are worth putting for the city or whomever to put some skin in the game to save. I mean, I'm so pleased to see on the docket today the Marion Hotel being saved. But I have a feeling that, given the condition of the Marion Hotel, had this particular developer not had the inclination to preserve the building, we would be looking at collectible bricks as opposed to a renovation now. I just, it has to take a special person to do it, but I think we have to encourage that person through our ordinance. It does have to take somebody that's willing to take It does have to take somebody that's willing to take a gamble, willing to spend maybe a little more to make something, but there's value in that. There's value for all of us, everybody in this room's going to benefit by that. I don't think there's anybody that'd go back and fill the Skirvin with bird manure and push it over again. We wouldn't do that. And, okay, three times enough.
All right. We ready to move it forward?
Well, just one comment, both directed towards both Councilman White and Councilman Shadie. You know, everyone's perspective on what needs to be saved is going to be different. And if we can go back to the, the building on the park, granted, I understand it had the word film on the outside of the building, but outside of that, from an artistic, architectural perspective, it didn't have much uniqueness or quality other than it was a very sound, soundly-built building, very thick with its concrete walls. But it was a, it was a building used for commerce, you know? They would bring in at that time film and then distribute them. It's, we could say the same thing to the oil and gas industry. You know, if there's a building on 29th Street that brought in equipment and then used to distribute out to, you know, other companies who were in the oil and gas business. So, from my perspective, if it has certain unique attributes from a architectural, or if the nature of its business was so unique, I think those types of facilities warrant preservation. But because this building, for a period of time, and it wasn't all that great, was in the business of distributing film, and it wasn't with the other areas within Oklahoma City that were truly focused on the distribution of films, outside of that, it was a square or rectangle building that didn't have much to offer from my perspective. Now, you all may look at it differently. The point I'm trying to raise is, without any type of economic consideration, I would just look at that building differently than what you two may look at it. And you're going to have that problem regardless of who the city manager appoints.
I agree we're going to have that problem, but if no one that thinks like I do is at the table, we already know the answer before we ask the question. And I don't think that's...
I don't agree with that.
I don't think that's fair.
You know, it might...
I, I can, is it possible that there's only two buildings in, in the, in the city of Oklahoma City that the city really got behind?
How, how is, how is that possible?
Councilman White, there, there's the mighty key, there, there's the pile building, Barbara's back there for the Seber, we, we, the, Mickey Clag's back there for all the buildings that they've saved, the Marion, the Ambassador House, you know, all has been saved up in, in Midtown. The Gold Dome, the Arcade Building, the 21C, the First National Building, there's a lot that have been saved in the, in the last five, seven years.
May I just ask a quick question of Aubrey again? And I, I want to go back to this question of must take a tour. Would that cause a hardship? Because I actually think the fact that people physically go look and see has made, I mean, to some people probably has made a negative difference, because when they go see it and there's nothing there, you know, but it also could make a positive difference. So, I kind of like the idea of must tour.
We, we encourage them to. Typically, what happens is when they come to the presentation as the case is reviewed at the design review committee, they like to hear the criteria and then go take a tour and then render a decision. So, it would delay the process if you had a mandatory tour, because it would have to happen in that sequence. And I, I don't know that that would be a hardship. It might be in some cases where somebody has a fast track, but we, we often encourage that to take place and are happy to organize it. That wasn't something that we had considered putting in the ordinance, but it's, it's certainly something that we can encourage or, or highly recommend that the committee see.
I think, I would do it as strongly as I, you know, if you don't want to amend, I think I would do it as strongly as possible. And if it's a fast-track thing, they know it's, they have to do it before. I mean, I just, I think it, it makes all the difference to, I mean, state, there are lots of, you know, and they're controversial, but, you know, when you walk through it, you have a much better perspective than if somebody just says, "This is a really nice building" or "This is a really terrible building sitting on this corner."
In some cases, it may be a lot more cut and dry for the committee to render a decision for that, that a mandatory tour might not reveal anything new to the committee that would change their minds, but in some cases, it sure is beneficial and, and they have taken advantage of that on numerous occasions.
All right, I just think it should be as...
Absolutely.
I think the other thing in this whole discussion that we're missing is that the fact that in all of the historic buildings that have been preserved, there's been a motivated developer that wants to do it. And I think that, I think that that's just something that you have to, you have to factor in and, you know, a lot of times that they need some public assistance to do it, which is fine. But I think that whenever the market sees something that is worth saving, then that's when the public can step in and do it. And, you know, I'm, I'm a guy that usually sides on public property rights as much as possible, so if somebody buys an old bus station or an old, you know, stage center that hasn't been used profitably in a long time and they want to tear it down, well, I mean, I think that the argument for something being historic was much stronger in something for stage center than something for, for the Film Exchange or for the, or for the bus bus station, so. But again, that's just my perspective, so, just my two cents.
James, it's not just your perspective. The National Trust, you know, for Historic Preservation counters that argument as one of their third leg of the third-legged stool. You know, property has to be important, significant, it has to be viable, but it also has to have dollars behind it. And, you know, there, there are just zillions of opportunities, but there aren't necessarily the dollars, and it takes whatever, there are lots of new terminology for it. It takes passion, or it takes vision, or it takes velocity, or there are all kinds of things, but at the end of the day, the project takes dollars.
How about a motion then to move this forward?
Subway.
All right. Any other comments or questions? All right, cast your votes. Push this forward. Final vote in two weeks. Item 9H is a public hearing regarding dilapidated structures. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under 9H? All right, how about a motion? Cast your votes. Passage unanimously. Item 9I is a public hearing regarding dilapidated structures in the Historic Preservation Landmark District. We have some people that have signed up to speak. I'll ask them to keep their comments to three minutes or less.
Good morning.
Good morning, Lauren. We'll need your name and address for the record.
2509 North Hudson Avenue. My name is Lauren Capron, and I'm here to speak on behalf of the House at 2900 North Harvey Parkway. The House at 2900 North Harvey Parkway is on the park. The park's being rebuilt. The house is, the, many of the houses are, not all, but most all the houses on Harvey, on the park are the bungalow-style homes. This is a bungalow-style home. I'm not opposed to taking the garage down, but I am opposed to taking that house down. Jefferson Park approved to, to keep this house, not tear this house down on July 31, and the HP Commission, our HP Commission here, has gone out there and looked at that house and does not want that house tore down either. They want that house restored. You've been sitting here talking about restoring, and this is in a bungalow community. If you drive through, I don't know if you all know where Jefferson Park is or not, but if you drive through Jefferson Park and you look at the little red signs, it says it's a bungalow community up there. Jefferson Park has rehabbed six Chodo houses. These houses that we rehabbed were in worse condition than that house right there, and I personally have rehabbed four houses in Jefferson Park. We've built 18 new bungalow homes in Jefferson Park, and we have offered advice to the people who have this house and builder who builds our bungalow houses have offered his advice or help to restore this house. So, we have suggested a contractor to them. I don't know what else to say. I came here with some people telling me that, that the council pretty much made up its mind. I hope that's not true. I hope that it gives some consideration to this. Across America, I don't know how many of you have been across America and ever took the time to look at some of the bungalow communities, but the prices on bungalow houses in, in, across this nation run from anywhere from $500,000 to $1 million coast to coast. And they just hit $200,000 in Jefferson Park. So, I'm encouraging you to reconsider or consider to saving this house and let it be rehabbed and let it be part of the, our bungalow community, and I thank you for listening to me.
Thanks, Lauren. Good morning. We'll need your name and address for the record.
My name is Nancy Nagel. I live at 506 Northwest 14th Street. I am a vice president of Historic Preservation, and I speak for Heritage Health Neighborhood. We are concerned about demolition of a home in a historic neighborhood. This property was brought with the knowledge that it was located in a historic district. It is a distressed property, but since its purchase, it has been allowed to deteriorate even further. There's been no effort to save or preserve any of the remaining structure by the owners. We feel that demolition of properties where, that can be renovated, but just because the owners do not want to renovate them, sets a terrible precedent, not only for Jefferson Park neighborhood, but for all the historic neighborhoods. Heritage Hills and all of the members of that neighborhood strongly encourage the council to deny the request for demolition of this property. It, it can be renovated and, as others have stated, help from that neighborhood and from other neighborhoods is available for this. So, 2900 North Harvey Parkway, we, we strongly encourage deny of request for demolition.
All right. Thank you, Nancy.
Can I ask you a question? Would, do you, if we did deny and then they weren't willing to renovate, do you think that the market, I mean, would there be people willing to buy it from them and renovate it?
I don't think there would be any doubt that a number of people would buy this property and renovate it.
Okay.
There's no doubt about that, and people in my neighborhood have already discussed that, and we feel strongly that we need to step up in helping that situation. There's no doubt that someone would buy this, or a group would buy this.
Thank you.
Josh Greenhall?
Can I, can I ask Mr. Matherley to speak first?
No, we have to go in the order that we, we call them up. Thank you, though.
I'll be brief. Good morning, counsel. Ted and Debra have asked me to speak on their behalf.
Josh, I'll need you to give your name and address for the record.
Yeah, Josh Greenhall, 1900 Northwest Expressway.
Okay.
Thank you. I'm a member of the Capitol Medical Zoning Improvement Commission for the state, and I'm on the HP Board for that body. I consider, in my position on that board, the same things you guys consider, and I see this kind of thing all the time. And I'd like to speak really to the point that was just raised. It sounds great to have somebody come in and buy these properties and renovate them, but what I've seen so many times in my district is that a buyer comes in and buys such a property and then it just can't be economically done, and then the can gets kicked down the road, and we end up having to demolish the structure. The goals of, of our district are the same as the goals of Oklahoma City HP, and there are extensive requirements for any structure that is built in the area that is covered by the HP. As the gentleman said before, several new bungalows were built in that district, and, and that was because the old ones couldn't be saved. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Josh. You can decline to speak if you'd like. Jameis Matherley?
Good morning.
Morning.
Thank you all very much for the opportunity to come and talk to you. My wife and I are the owners of the property at 2900 North Harvey Parkway.
I will need your name and address for the record.
Oh, sorry, James Matherley, 2900 North Harvey Parkway.
Okay.
And if the council would like, I have a little information on the house.
Sure.
It was repaired, owns a course of time, we own the property. As, as previous commenters have pointed out, we have owned the property for two years now. And I, the one thing I would like to point out is that the issue that the council's considering today is not whether or not we want to demolish the house. The city council is considering whether or not city planning, the city building inspector is determining that this house is dilapidated, and the city council is determining whether or not they're going to certify that dilapidation. This is not something that I'm doing and my wife are doing. This is the city that's determined that the house is dilapidated, and they're asking to certify that. The issue at hand, though, is that this is in a historic preservation neighborhood, and as a consequence of that, this is not a decision that the city should be taking lightly. And I support that. My wife and I both grew up in houses built before the 20th century, the turn of the 20th century. We have a deep appreciation for the value of historic homes. But the city council still has a process in place for determining when houses that are dilapidated need to be taken down. This council has determined five houses in Ward 2 since 2011 were dilapidated and certified them for, that were historic, and certified them for demolition. And we support that, the goal of historic preservation, but there is a process in place for dealing with houses when they get to a point where they can no longer be saved. This house, since we bought it in February of 2014, we have invested considerable time and effort into investigating every potential path forward for this house. We've had multiple experts come out and view this house, and this house has been, since it was bought from the previous owner, or the previous owner owned it in 1972, to the comments of several of the neighbors that have sent letters to the council, 40 years of deferred maintenance on this house, and it sat empty for three years before we purchased it, which has led it to be in the state that it's in today, as you can see. Two structural engineers have viewed this house and performed detailed inspections of it. The reports, the reports are in front of you right now. Both of them have determined that this house cannot be saved. The Laurent Massanet, one of those structural engineers, met with ourselves and Councilman Shadie and shared that opinion with him directly a few weeks ago. In addition, we've had two contractors experienced in working in historic preservation neighborhoods come out and inspect this house, and their quotes for repairing this house reflect the fact that redoing the work on this house would require disassembling it piece by piece, brick by brick, and evaluating each piece to determine if it can be included in the rebuilt structure, which means that what's going to end up in the end is a facsimile of the original building that retains little, if any, of the historic value. And as you might imagine, the cost of doing that would be astronomical. The quotes we got were for $260 per square foot, which is more than four times the cost of the average sale price of houses in this neighborhood over the past few years. It's just not reasonable to do this. And furthermore, the building inspector inspected this house in September of 2013 and began the process of declaring it dilapidated. This was prior to the time that we purchased the house, and we just learned this a few weeks ago with Councilman Shadie. I did not, we did not know this at the time, but this house has not deteriorated past its, during, for, this house has not deteriorated anymore while we've owned it. It was already in the process of being declared dilapidated before we even bought it. We have not contributed to the state of this house beyond the fact that it's been sitting unoccupied. All right? So, in addition to all these professional opinions, we've also gone out and talked to many of the neighborhood members and asked them what their thoughts are. And every single member of our neighborhood that we met with in the immediate vicinity of the house has signed a letter to Councilman Shadie saying they do not oppose the demolition of this house, and many of them have also written letters to the council attesting to that as well. We knew this house had issues when we went into it. We knew this, but we took on the challenges associated with this house because we want to be a part of the Jefferson Park community. We're, this is the only house that we own, it's the first house that my wife and I ever bought together, and we want to be a part of this neighborhood, we want to contribute to this community. And... to contribute to this community. And to that end, we've invested two years of our lives into realizing that goal. And we know that, to the points that have very even raised by the different council members, by Councilman Shadid and Councilwoman Sawyer earlier, about the process for having these houses approved. Any house that we build would have to go before the Historic Preservation Council and be consistent with this bungalow style of houses in the neighborhood that we value. That's the whole reason why we bought here, is we like this neighborhood. We like the style of houses. We want to be a part of it. And we want to build a structure and invest in this neighborhood to be a part of it in the future and contribute to the historic character of it. I know I've gone a little over on time.
Yeah.
But I thank you all very much for your consideration of this issue. And if you have questions on things, I'd be more than happy to address them.
I do. Let me ask. When you saw it and you were thinking about buying it, and the process of buying it, I understood, took like nine months. Did you do any inspections or structural studies prior to closing?
We did not. We toured the house, but we did not have a structural engineer come in and review the house prior to it.
Did you have a real estate attorney helping you through that nine-month process of closing that was advising you about buying a house in a historic neighborhood?
His advice was not specific to issues relating to the historic nature of the neighborhood. The house, when we bought it, had some serious title issues, and that was the source of the nine months of time that we spent trying to track down the previous owner and get clear title on the house. And that was the primary advice that he was giving us regarding the property.
But you had access to a real estate attorney who was helping you through the title work in a historic neighborhood?
His expertise was in real property, not necessarily of a historic nature.
Okay. How long after you bought it did you begin movement towards demolition?
Starting shortly after we purchased the house in February 2014, we began the process of bringing structural engineers out to inspect the house. I think Laurent visited in March, and Carissa Ramming visited in April, I believe. So we had two engineers out who both went out and performed detailed inspections of it, and their conclusion was unanimous and definitive, that this property could not be saved.
So why not do that structural study before you bought it?
At the time, we felt that the challenge, we knew there was going to be some challenges in rehabilitation of the house, but the work that we put in towards clearing the title and our sort of relationship with the owners of the house led us to believe that it was worth the challenge of trying to take this on and looking at those things afterwards because we were very excited to be a part of the neighborhood. We really liked this area. It's a beautiful lot. It's facing the park. And as Lauren has already alluded to, they're doing a whole bunch of really nice things in the park to beautify this area. And so we were willing to take on a challenge.
I mean, if I was going to buy a house and I knew that I had to renovate it, I would have the purchase price would be part of my calculation, and then I think I would want some estimate of what it would cost me to renovate it. So I personally would get inspections and structural studies before I closed. I think you know that the counter opinion is that this was never bought to renovate it, that the purpose was to buy it for some $40,000, a very, a lot that's across from a park. And so the lot itself is probably worth $40,000 or more. But that if somebody were to come in and not do any inspections or structural studies before they close, and then immediately after they close start moving towards demolition, that the intent was always to buy it in order to demolish it?
I understand that. And I would not try to deceive you and say that it wasn't something that we'd consider, had not considered prior to it. We considered all paths forward for the property. And as I've pointed out, my wife and I do, part of the reason why we bought in this neighborhood is because we do appreciate historic value, the historic value of this house, as I've pointed out. I've lived in them all my life. And I really do value them a lot. And so I encourage the council to take that consideration very seriously. But this is, as we know, the city was in the process of wanting to clear this house dilapidated long before we bought it. And so this has been a known issue in the city for some time. And we put a huge effort forth to try to resolve these issues with the title at great expense beyond the $40,000 that we paid in purchase price for the house to try to get those issues resolved at a point when no one prior to that had really stepped up to try to do anything with this house, as it had sat unoccupied for a long period of time. And, you know, I think, as I said, I would not deny that we had had that as an option on the table, but we'd hoped that that was not necessarily the route we would take. But whenever I am in a situation where I'm not an expert on something, and I profess no expertise in structures or building, my wife is an architect, but I'm just professor of crazy stuff, but stuff unrelated to this, that I'm going to defer to expertise. And I have, feel like we've consulted a sufficient number of experts in this area that I feel quite confident that this is the right path forward for this house.
When I talked to the president of the Neighborhood Association, he indicated that he toured it with you early, and there was a hole in the roof that would allow rain to enter. Was there an attempt made to repair the roof and stop water from entering the...
That was, without the time we inspected the house, or had our structural engineers come out, we went around and tried to do some repairs to some of those areas in the house. But as you know, in a historic preservation neighborhood, there's great limitations on what we can do without certificates of appropriateness. And so we can put stopgap measures in, but we really can't do anything major until we have a CA from Historic Preservation to do any serious work on the house. And we were reluctant to invest substantial amounts of money in a house that everyone is telling us should be torn down.
If you have a, I mean, if you have a hole in the roof that allows rainwater to enter the house, I mean, surely you could get that repaired. I mean, nobody's going to object to that, right?
My experience is that HP is quite particular about any sort of work being done on houses.
Okay.
And anything that is done requires a certificate of appropriateness, from my knowledge of that. So as I said, we can do stopgap measures, small things, putting a tarp up, things like that. But you can't do anything serious to replace the roof until you go through the process of getting a CA, which is quite lengthy.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
Thank you.
Shannon Rundell?
Shannon Rundell, 431 Northwest 20th, representing the Historic Preservation Alliance, which is the historic preservation districts who have formed a group to work together on common issues. And we, of course, would like this denied. There's so much to visit about here. First of all, thank Ed and Pete. I about cried when you stood up for a few more bleeding hearts on some of the commissions, but I appreciate you all. I too have a long memory, Pete, and remember having my daughter's ninth birthday party in Sparrow Park. I've lived south of 50th for 40 years, and live in Heritage Hills now, have been on HP Commission. And I believe, the truth is, that the HP Commission is being misrepresented by this person who says you can't put a roof on if you have an active leak. I think it's an administrative approval. I believe that that wouldn't even have had to go to the commission for him to put a roof on this house with notice to Katie Fredle, the HP officer. The HP Commission did tour this house, and they say it can be saved. We've all seen a lot of houses saved. The price that he paid for this house is about half of what people are paying for vacant lots in these inner-city neighborhoods. Thanks to a lot that you all have done downtown, and thanks to, I think, a lot of us for being involved with the city for many years, our downtown neighborhoods are thriving. I think that he picked up a lot real cheap. And there is in the HP Commission meeting notes, and I don't have it, it's well over a year ago, when they first came to HP wanting to demolish this house, there is an engineering report by a licensed structural engineer that did go into the property at their invitation, and then they claimed that they didn't give him permission. But it is a licensed structural engineering report that says this house can be saved. And the people that have looked at it more recently say it can be saved. We're very concerned if this starts setting a precedent in our neighborhoods. This location makes this house very notable nationwide. The bungalow neighborhoods were unique at the time they were built, and in the national register application for Jefferson Park, this area with bungalows surrounding, it's notable across the country. This is, we've all, as we say, Lauren Capron, thank you for coming. He has seen many saved in far worse shape. So that, I would just like it to be denied because I think it can be saved. And they can probably turn a profit on what they've got in it if they want to not take the renovation on. Thank you.
Marva Ellard? Thank you, Lauren.
Marva Ellard, 1521 North Chertel. As our city manager, Jim Couch, said, yes, I'm one of those, I'll say it, crazy people who take on these projects from time... You didn't call me crazy. I didn't say you did. I said, I said that. And I think there would have been times if I would have come before council between 1997 and 2006 and said, I think I've taken on too much with the Seber, and maybe I need to sell it or tear it down. Those of you who were on council then probably would have said, well, we understand that. But I think this is a situation where people are trying to manipulate our ordinances. And I don't think we want to see this pursued. Some of the statements made are just not accurate. Blue tarps are readily available and easy to install on a roof. If you have a hole in the roof, I don't think anybody in town is going to stop you from doing that. The bamboo's not been trimmed. The trees haven't been trimmed. No effort's been made to make this house look better or stabilize it in any fashion. I worked with Deborah on a project at an architect's office, and she told me that she and her husband were real excited about a house they were buying, and that they planned on tearing it down and building a new house. At that time, I didn't know where the house was. I didn't know where the house was until they applied for demolition in front of the HP Commission well over a year ago. There's one outstanding property maintenance citation on this house. Is that right, Charles?
I don't know how many are outstanding. There have been several, several that have been issued over the last seven years.
But to this owner, there's one outstanding, as far as my research shows. So we go from one outstanding citation, and today it's been considered for demolition. I think there's a gap in the process that we need to look at. Houses shouldn't go from property maintenance issues to demolition without working the property maintenance aspect of it. These houses are too important to our HP districts. People buy in HP districts because they think the ordinance is going to protect them and improve things like this. I can give you a list of addresses we could go look at. 901 Northwest 19th is one. A house in Mesa that we all were afraid was going to fall down. It has new owners, you know? So this house deserves a chance, and I think it needs to go through the process of property maintenance before we consider tearing it down.
Okay. Thanks for coming down. Ed, I think the ball's in your court if you want to do something different.
I mean, I definitely would look to guidance from Meg and anybody else. But I have fear. I don't think you can look at this just in a silo, just at 2900 North Harvey Parkway. I'm nervous about what's happening in Ward 2. Some of it's not in historic preserve districts, but there's clearly people buying houses to demolish them for surface parking lots or other. But in historic districts, I'm nervous about the precedent that would be set when the city's apparatus for demolishing dilapidated buildings gets used against us, when it gets used to help facilitate demolition in a historic district. The HP Commission basically saw it the same way. They felt that this contributed to the historic nature. They felt like the owners had contributed to its further dilapidation, and that that should not be rewarded. Allowing something to dilapidate further should not be rewarded economically by allowing it to be demolished. The applicant is, one of them is an architect. I mean, they have knowledge of real estate development and structure. They had an attorney. They did no studies prior to buying it, which to me, someone would do if they had any thought of renovating it. If there was any neighborhood in the city of Oklahoma City that you would be hesitant to demolish, it would be Jefferson Park because it has the city's most successful CHODO program, where the Neighborhood Association, through its CHODO program, is taking these houses, renovating them, and then putting them back on the market. And they've done it over and over and over. So if there was any neighborhood in the city that should rise to a higher standard, it would be Jefferson Park. Meg, do you have other thoughts or...
Well, Ed, I do. And, you know, this is a complicated case.
Yeah.
As we can see, the pictures are terrible. But I really lean to the concern about precedents. This is not the only property that's been, you know, been neglected and has been torn down. It's happened in the past. This is a really significant house. And, you know, years ago, I lived on Harvey Parkway, just a few blocks south of this. Sparrow Park is a very unique environment. I respect the engineers that wrote these reports, both of them. I know them personally, and I'm certain they're correct. But we've seen worse structures saved. And I guess, I'm afraid that I fall, you know, to some extent on the side of thinking this property was purchased with full knowledge that it was in an HP district and has been allowed to continue to deteriorate and probably can be saved. The other side of the argument, and you can almost go there as well, is that it looks like a public safety issue. And at some level, this council has to be concerned about the public safety. And so it's tough. I think if I understand there are two structures, and I'd get clarity maybe even from the neighbors on this, I understand there's a house and a garage.
That would be correct.
In my discussions, the neighborhood wasn't as concerned about the garage. And maybe we separate these two, bifurcate these two things, and allow the garage to come down.
The garage is probably the safer structure of the two.
Oh. Well, there you go. There was my argument. So I don't know how you want to handle that. But I think, I believe I am aware that there are folks that would be willing to step up and take this project on. And I'd rather see it taken on than I would see the house demolished.
And I agree. If there's any other comments, I mean, I'm inclined to vote against demolition or at a minimum, continuing it for 30 days to see, you know, if there's any negotiations that want to take place. I do think that there are, I forgot what you called it, James, but there are economic motivated developers who would buy this, where they could turn, the present owners could realize a significant return on investment, and it can be saved. So if we vote today, I would vote against it. If we want to continue it for 30 days...
Continue it for 30 days. Give them the process a chance to work. What happens?
Okay. Does that seem reasonable?
That'd be November 10.
Okay.
Four weeks.
Four weeks. Okay. So I'll move to continue this for four weeks.
I have a question with the, I have a question with the dilapidated. Just because when it's all normal dilapidated, I mean, clearly, if this was something that was in a normal, not historic preservation district, I mean, we wouldn't even, we wouldn't even bat an eye on leaving it on, on leaving it dilapidated. And so is there a different set of criteria that we have to follow in historic preservation?
James, I think there are. When they're in a historic preservation district, the HP Commission is required to weigh in and deliver a report to us
Uh huh.
that says whether or not the property is contributing or not. And they have weighed in and said the property is contributing to the neighborhood, and they recommend, they recommend denial. That is part of our process in historic neighborhoods.
That property is contributing. Okay.
Question on the safety issue. Is this property the way to, forget where it's located in HP, is it a safety issue as we sit here today?
Yes, it is. It's in danger of collapse. The danger to the roof, they, it's had significant collapsing. The foundation is in really bad shape, as you can see from the pictures. It's cracked. It's buckled in places. The ceiling has collapsed in a lot of the rooms. It does have a significant danger of collapse to it.
Then, what is the impact that it's in a historic preservation neighborhood? How does that trump or not trump the fact that we have an unsafe property here?
It doesn't trump the city council. That's why it's before you. And you still have the discretion to decide...
And you still have the discretion to decide that the city is going to demolish the structure or to pass this resolution, which orders the owner to demolish it, or the city will do it if the owner does not do it. So, if you decide not to pass the resolution, then the city will not be proceeding with its own possible demolition. And for the owner to be able to demolish it, they would need to get a CA from the HP Commission.
So, that was my question. So, the property owner cannot demolish it as it is?
Not without a CA.
Okay.
As I understand it, the only person that can demolish it without a CA is the city.
I think this makes... The situation makes the point that Ed raised. It's a situation where our own ordinances are being used against us. I mean, that's the dilemma. But I think we just have to come down on the side of what we think's right. It's obviously a safety issue. You can look at it and tell it is. But is it a safety issue that was generated for the purpose of demolishing it from the very beginning? And I think that's pretty evident from what we've heard, that that's what happens.
I think that it's been in this state for quite a while. I mean, a year and a half. If we were going to demolish it, it wouldn't have to be done until November 13th. So, I think delaying 30 days and trying to figure this out is... I don't think it makes that much difference. And if... And then, we can go from there.
Okay. I'll take that as a motion to defer item 9LA for 28 days for four weeks until that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. We're voting on that item only. Cast your votes. So, that item is deferred four weeks. Now, is there a motion on the rest of item 9I1, which include B, C, and D?
Just to point out that item C has been deferred earlier.
And B was deferred as well?
Okay. So, only D then?
And has anybody signed up to speak on D or... Okay.
All right. Cast your votes. So, item D passes unanimously. Item 9J is a public hearing regarding unsecured structures. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under 9J? All right. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 9K is a public hearing regarding abandoned buildings. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under 9K? Okay. Come on forward. I'll need your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, Michael C. Washington, 2900 Northeast 18th Street. I want to know what can we do about these free abandoned buildings? I'd like to buy them. Can somebody help me buy them? Why not? Y'all got... Y'all passed money for these turfs and what, tiffs and things? I mean, these buildings could be used to put... Get people, whinos off the street. It could be used to help young children in education. It could be used to better beautify our communities. Okay? So, in and of itself, if you can give money, use the federal, state government monies to give to two or three people because they already have money, it seems to me that you can also use these abandoned buildings to use money, state revenue. But it's my taxpayers' dollars. Yes, I do pay taxes. And well, it's my family members. We would like to buy those abandoned buildings. That's up for... Are they up for sale, by the way? Is that a good question?
All right. Thanks, Michael.
Are they up for sale?
We don't own them. You'd have to contact the individual property owners.
And if they are for sale, will you be willing to give us some money to buy them?
Michael, you're going to have to talk under citizens to be heard. Right now, we're going through this specific list. All right. Do we have a motion in a second on the abandoned buildings list? All right. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 9L is a public hearing regarding the removal of a property from the abandoned building list. Is there anyone here hoping to speak on item 9L? All right. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 9M is an item the council was presented a presentation on two weeks ago. This has to do with the issue on Northeast 36th Street. Do we have a motion? Is there a second? All right. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 9N is a public hearing regarding a grant that we're hoping to apply for, and Chief City is here to explain.
The Justice Assistance Grant is an annual grant that we get. It's a three-year grant. It's a direct federal grant to the city of Oklahoma City. We split it four ways. This year's grant was a sum... Total sum of $465,000. There's a percentage... There's a formula applied to that to four agencies: us, Oklahoma County Sheriff's Office, Dell City, and Midwest City. And that grant is split four ways. Our share of that is $365,000. We have five different areas that we're going to spend those funds in.
Okay. Thanks, Chief. And then, item 9O, you want to explain that one too? That's the use of force.
Right. The use of force policy, we have amended that policy, made some changes to that in reference to shooting at vehicles. The language in it makes it more restrictive as to when officers can actually shoot into a vehicle at any possible suspects.
All right. We'll need to vote on these separately. Do I have a motion on 9N? Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 9O is a resolution approving the police policy on the use of force. Is that the item you want to speak on? Okay. Come on forward.
Thank you so much for this opportunity. I did hear what Chief Bill City said, and for the most part, I do agree in somewhat degree about shooting into vehicles with people, as a matter of fact, not even being threats. We are dealing here with a situation, especially on the northeast side of Oklahoma City, where we have nothing but white police officers who man the northeast side of Oklahoma City. Automatically, ladies and gentlemen, African-Americans are automatically seen, stereotyped as being troublemakers. And I believe, Mr. Bill City, this is the very reason why you don't have African-Americans who look like me or some other minority people who have that type of background, who will understand that all African-Americans are not criminals. And again, let me also say, ladies and gentlemen out here as well as to this council meeting, we again are being stereotyped, discriminated against. And because we are, we have officers right today stopping and pulling people over in relationship now to the same crime charge and already being told, first of all, let me see what's up with you. You know? Let me see if you have warrants or whatever. And I've been told by one inmate, as a matter of fact, one person that I speak to daily, that he himself drove off because the officer had no reason to pull him off, and he was shot at. Okay? So, now, whatever measures he's saying has been changed, obviously, hasn't done any good yet. Okay? So, I'm saying myself that before you vote on anything regarding that, I don't know whether you can amend it or take over, do it again, we need to have a further investigation by people like myself, who were not contacted before this thing was considered. And I also have people myself who I can bring in to tell you about what's going on, how we're being targeted, how we're being killed and murdered by Oklahoma City Police Department. Okay? Thank you. And I definitely have a lot more.
We have a motion in a second on 9O. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 9P, understand we do not need executive session on this item?
That's correct.
All right. How about a motion then to approve 9P? Is there a second? Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 9Q, understand we do not need executive session on that item?
That's correct.
We do not.
All right. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Under 9R, understand we do not need executive session on this item?
Correct.
Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 9S, understand we do not need executive session?
That's correct.
Correct.
Okay. Cast your votes on 9S. Passed unanimously. Item 9T, we do not need executive session. Is there a motion? All right. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 9U, I understand we do need executive session on this item?
Yes.
All right. Cast your votes. That item moves to executive session. Item 9V, I understand we do need executive session?
Yes, sir.
All right. How about a motion to move that item to executive session? Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 9W is claims recommended for denial. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under 9W? All right. How about a motion? Is there a second? Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 10A is claims recommended for approval. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under 10A? How about a motion then? Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 11 is items from council. And we'll begin with an item... Let's see. Item 11A, has that been deferred until December 8th? Okay. Item 11A has been deferred until December 8th. Moves us to item 11B, which has been a resolution that is sponsored by Councilmen Shadid, White, and Pettis. Pete, you've kind of taken the lead on this. You want to say anything before we start hearing from people?
No, I don't think so. I think we'll just go ahead and listen to the people that are here.
Okay. We have a number of people that have signed up to speak on this item. I'll ask them to keep their comments to three minutes left. Debbie Hoed Downing?
Debbie Hoed Downing, 5936 North Sapulpa, Oklahoma City. Thank you. Grading today. I come in support of the resolution. I'm very proud of Oklahoma City. I'm so proud that we are a progressive city. We've done many things to make us progressive, and other people from other states know that. So, I think it's time that we look at the different cultures within Oklahoma City and we become more progressive in that area, that we learn about our culture, the Native American culture per se, and let other people know more about it. In Oklahoma City, there is not just one tribe here. There are many tribes, whereas in other cities, there are the nations based there. So, we're a very diverse group here in Oklahoma City. Also, I was excited yesterday to see the leadership at the university levels with OU, OCU, and Southeastern taking a stand on Indigenous Peoples' Day. It was very exciting. Also, there's other cities within the United States, as Albuquerque, New Mexico, and also Lawrence, Kansas, which are near Oklahoma. And here in our own state with Anadarko, Oklahoma, taking a lead. So, I think it's time Oklahoma City take a lead and take a stand for this resolution. So, I encourage your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Debbie. Amanda Anderson?
Amanda Anderson, 4800 South Foster Road, number 219, here in Oklahoma City. I wanted to come to you guys today as an individual who comes from mixed heritage. I am Choctaw. I am also English, French, Scottish, and Irish. As a person of mixed heritage, supporting Indigenous Peoples' Day would be extremely important to me because I would be able to share my Choctaw culture. I would also be able to include those who are my family members, who are non-Indian, in learning about my culture as well as many others. I am also a future educator. When we support things like celebrating Christopher Columbus, we always talk about how he sailed the Ocean Blue and he discovered people. But those people were already here. That land was already here. As Americans, we have an opportunity to define ourselves. When we're celebrating someone who did not even come to this continent, we're not defining ourselves. We're defining someone else. Columbus only made it to the West Indies. He didn't make it here. He did pave the way, however, for people to come here. My tribe made contact with Spanish people who came following Columbus. I benefited from that, from having this mixed heritage. I can't support someone who brought the negative things that he brought, though. He brought slavery. He brought disease. He brought some goods that Native people were able to use. In return, our Native people had things that Europeans were able to use. If we are supporting Columbus Day still, instead of Indigenous Peoples' Day, we're saying that those Europeans who came over are the only ones who matter. And that is something that really needs to be considered. It's hard for me to walk into two worlds. I do it every day. I have to wonder about people like my daughter, who has blonde hair and blue eyes, has been learning her culture. But how are her grandchildren, who will be around in 2092, going to be able to handle things like what I had to experience in 1992 during the 500-year celebration, where I had a teacher hand me a costume and say, "Well, here, have your heathen outfit. That's what you're going to be." Recognizing Christopher Columbus's contributions, yes, is important, but not recognizing Indigenous people for the contributions that we have made as well to shape this country would be very wrong. Thank you.
Thank you. Elena Talley?
My name is Elena Talley, and I live at 1507 Northwest 19th Street. I'm a student at OU, and yesterday I got to participate in Oklahoma's first formal Indigenous Peoples' Day celebration at my university. And I was so excited to get to share my culture with other students at OU. And honestly, I expected there to be only Native American students like me there, but then I was surprised to see how Indigenous Peoples' Day actually brought people together. During the flag procession, Brazilian natives from South America marched next to me, Mexican natives from Central America marched next to me, Canadian natives from North America marched next to me. And we all came from these diverse cultural backgrounds, but we share a common history as indigenous, original people of these Americas. All of our ancestors faced great tragedy at the hands of European settlers who oftentimes sought to destroy us in the past. We're all proud peoples who have positively contributed to the story of the Americas, and all of us have survived and we've thrived, despite the efforts of local, state, and national governments to smother our cultures. The event at OU was a huge success. I couldn't believe the turnout, and I was really proud of my university for decommemorating Columbus Day and showing Indigenous people that we matter, we still matter today. And passing this resolution in Oklahoma City will not bring Indigenous lives lost due to colonization any justice or reconciliation, but recognizing our resilience and our struggles is a step towards a long journey of healing from this historical trauma that we have faced at the hands of the US government. And I hope to see that in Oklahoma City, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Sunhawk Hill?
My name is Sunhawk Hill. I live in Ada, Row 1, or Field Box 2243. I'm going to try and make this brief. Tribes in Oklahoma contribute to over 87,700 jobs in the state. We make $10.8 billion impact on the state. The city seal right here represents a symbol of positive change. Celebrating Columbus Day in any respect violates our rights of respect and dignity, which are protected under the legally binding Universal Declaration Treaty on Human Rights. Under Article 6 of the US Constitution as the supreme law of the land, under the Ninth Amendment, it states, "The enumeration in the Constitution of certain rights shall not be construed to deny or disparage others retained by the people." The first line of the UN Declaration of Human Rights refers to the recognition of the inherent dignity and of the inalienable rights of all members of the human family. Continuing such offensive expression with respect of Columbus would be a careless act that perpetuates the apparent harm, that in which would be obvious to any reasonable and prudent person. The continuation results in disruption to public peace and public order, violating the ideal of equality between members of society. The offensive celebration has propensity to cause and does cause social division and social unrest. The offensive act that is clearly... The offensive act that is clearly harmful to ethnicities that have endured centuries of harm only exacerbates the existing ethnic tensions. And the harm we now have knowledge of should make us, under our own laws, liable for the foreseeable harm that results from the continuation of these offensive expressions. We pay taxes, we are the people who cook your food, we drive your buses, police your neighborhoods. Like other cities and states, change with discontinued disrespect and deprivation of our fundamental rights under the US Constitution, Human Rights Treaty, and the Christian principle, treat others like you want to be treated. Common sense tells us that reducing the racial tensions and separation in the state would clearly be in everyone's best interest. America is against terrorism. How does that look when we celebrate or vote on what our laws today clearly define as a terrorist? Think of all the Indigenous people that will come from all around to spend money in the city yearly to celebrate. Over 400 people gathered yesterday in Albuquerque to celebrate their step forward. Everyone can agree that this city needs a healthy atmosphere. Over 4 million Indigenous voters in the US, the word Oklahoma refers to the home of Indigenous people. Not only that, but think of the potential partnership that you could facilitate by passing this resolution. Positive change would be in the best interest of economic, legal, and moral social welfare. Let's work together.
Thank you. Tushka Hill?
Good morning, council members. Appreciate your time and consideration on this matter. It's a very important matter to a lot of us. I'm sure you're all aware of social media, Facebook, Twitter, and it is currently a buzz with this issue. There are people all over the place who are in complete favor of this. Many of them couldn't be here, as I know that they wanted to, but I'd like to say that I would at least halfway represent them in this issue. A few key points that I'd like to point out is, one of the big arguments on this is that they don't want to go against Italian-Americans, you're worried about offending this group. In Italy, they don't even celebrate Columbus Day. It's not part of their thing. One of the points I'd like to make is, if his discovery had been made today, and if all the atrocities that came across, would people still celebrate this holiday? Would it have a leg to stand on? I don't know if you guys have done your research, but I have. I know the seriously bad things, and I'd like to mention them, but they're pretty gruesome. And anyway, another point I'd like to make out is, it's well documented that Native Americans have been in this continent for millennia. So who really discovered America? Everybody knows that there's different theories. You've got the land bridge, you've got all these different theories. Native Americans discovered America. And every time there's a new anthropological site being opened up, they push the number back even further. It was 7,000 years, 8,000 years, 10,000 years, 12,000 years, 15,000 years, 20,000 years. We've been here for a very, very long time. Columbus, I'm not saying strike him from the record books, I'm not saying blacklist him or anything, I'm just saying, we've got no reason to celebrate him. He was from Italy, and he was financed by Spain. It had nothing to do with America. It was one of the first ones here, who represented a whole nother government, not American government, Spanish government, yeah. But anyway, I just want to say thank you and very much for your consideration. God bless.
Thank you. Karen Stafford?
Karen Stafford, 1516 Glenbrook Drive. I've been teaching in Oklahoma City for going on 26 years now. When I was a little girl growing up in Houston, we celebrated the explorer who discovered the New World. As I became more educated, I learned that sailing the Ocean Blue meant four voyages to the Caribbean Islands by Christopher Cologne, which involved considerable carnage, complete with human cargo on the return ships. By the time I graduated from my high school in Texas in 1975, I questioned by the United States honors an historic figure, by definition a slave trader who embodied genocide. Forty years later, I still wonder, where the New World in this millennium? We no longer need to hold on to symbols that do not reflect who we are as a community or who we would like to be as a society. In these times, granting one day out of our calendar year to acknowledge our Native American population makes sense. Recognizing original peoples and their descendants is a big step toward healing and becoming a more inclusive community. Oklahoma City ranks fourth in the nation for our Native American population. Today, all of you have the opportunity to be leaders of a community that is moving forward and looking ahead by voting yes, supporting Indigenous Peoples' Day. I'm appealing to your open hearts and minds, your collective higher consciousness, to vote yes on this resolution. In these times, 2015, is the right time to make this change. I want to thank Mayor Cornett and the city council for hearing our collective voices today for this significant decision. Thank you.
Thanks, Karen. Tashina Goodbear?
Hello, I'm Tashina Goodbear. I live at 1404 Northwest 17th Street. I'm an enrolled member of the Northern Cheyenne Tribe. I'm also Ponca in Choctaw. I currently attend OTRIP, and I plan on being a behavioral psychologist. I'm here in regards to Columbus Day. If I had come into this room, and I liked this room, and I just decided that I would just take it, even though there's people in here, and you would have to listen to me, how would you feel about that? Not only this, but because you guys are so nice to listen to me, I would feel the need to use you to my advantage because of your kindness. If I were to then take you guys and enslave you, and then do inhumane punishments to you just because you are different, how would you feel? There's more graphic things than just this. He abused, raped, and tortured those that are like me. Believe it or not, this catapulted into the genocide of my nation, of around 500 nations. For some, it literally led to complete extinction of their kind, just from a man who landed in the Caribbean, not even on this landmass. An entry made by the man claiming to discover North America, he stated several times the friendliness of the Indigenous people, clearly noting that he would take advantage of us and abuse their welcoming ways, and abuse their kindness to the point of rape, murder, and enslavement. I do have a quotation here of him abusing an Indigenous woman in the Caribbean, but I do not want to talk about it because it is so painful to even think about it, because it even happens now. This kind of pain is brought on by the single man who claims to represent a church who recognizes God as a holy man. What kind of true holy man would bring forth such traumas that those who are present to see this cannot believe the atrocities that were happening? Another point I had seen online was, it's sad to see children reciting the ships Columbus arrived on, but not the Indigenous people he encountered. And before you can think, "So what?", not only did the Caribbean people feel this pain, so did those in this room. Not just past tense, but present tense. We'll be here hours if I were to discuss the atrocities of hundreds of years of abuse from those who claimed to discover this land. Not only this, but Columbus is not a federal holiday until 1937, at the hands of FDR and the Knights of Columbus, those who were of Italian descent and Roman Catholics. However, the lack-of-logic holiday began in 1892 as an attempt to be thankful for American life because of Columbus. But how can Americans be thankful for a man who landed in the Caribbean and didn't participate in the bulldozing of hundreds of Indigenous tribes in the mainland? He never set foot on this American soil. So when Nixon ran another celebratory modification to Columbus Day in 1971, it became a reiteration of massive amounts of respect.
Tashina, I'm going to ask you to wrap up your comments.
Okay. For the original inhabitants of this continent. And so I just wanted to talk to you guys about what he really did without the graphic imagery. So, thank you. Nowish.
Garland Pruitt?
Garland Pruitt, 952 North XXX Road, Choctaw, Oklahoma. I'm in total support of this resolution. They say when we know better, we do better. This is an opportunity for us to fix, for us to change, for us to put some things in place that we, we, all of us know, as well as those that are not here, that should be addressed. You all have the power. You have the influence. You're in a position to make history. It's amazing that across the nation, people are aware of this needs to happen. People are promoting and suggesting and putting things in place for this to happen. Oklahomas consider themselves to be the Sooners, be sooner than later, in making this decision. The resolution is long overdue. We want you to reflect upon yourself and you and your family, how you can make history on making the right decision and making the right choice. It's always easy to not make a decision when it has the impact that it's going to have. We support it, we endorse it, we recommend it. It's long overdue, and you need to make the right decision and do the right thing and put forth this effort to correct the tragedy that has not only happened in the past, but is still happening. The proper justice for all, equal in equality is not happening. You're in a position to correct that. We counted on you to make the right decision and do the right thing and support this ordinance. Thank you.
Amy Bergsith?
Hello, I'm Amy Bergsith. I'm a resident of Norman, but continually supporter and, I guess, consumer and visitor to Oklahoma City. I'm a grad student in history at University of Oklahoma, and I want to thank you for letting me come and speak to you. I would like you to reconsider this resolution to declare the 2nd Monday of October into Indigenous Peoples' Day. I think Oklahoma City should follow the example of the places across the country who are changing and finding that there's a need for not necessarily getting rid of, well, getting rid of Columbus Day, but making it an Indigenous Peoples' Day. I myself am an Oklahoman of European descent, of Polish, Norwegian, and German ancestry. But I also, I would like to urge you and see that we all have, should see importance in recognizing this day. As Elena mentioned the other day, OU brought together students from Indigenous South America and Central America, and I think it's a really good opportunity for Oklahoma City to recognize its Indigenous, its diversity, its Indigenous speakers, and its Hispanic and Spanish-speaking community members in the state as well, and recognize the past and also the importance of their place in the city and the state. The Italian scholar Catherine Anastasi has discussed about what the meaning of Columbus Day has been, and she herself has recognized that the celebration of Columbus has sanitized and silenced the histories of the people of this continent before Italians-Americans. And she has recognized that the original adoption of Christopher Columbus as a hero was as part of a social anxiety of Italian-Americans to see themselves as ethnically not inclusive of the rest of America. And she urges that it is important for non-natives to recognize, she says, quote, "It is important for non-natives to respect and learn the histories of the injustice of what is now North America and explore your own linkages and departures from this place and this land." And that it's crucial for Italian-Americans, and I would like to say maybe as European-American descendant, or people too who are Oklahomans, that, she says, quote, "It is important to understand Indigenous people want, who need, to keep alive their histories of resistance and survival are not their enemy, they're not the Italian-American's enemy. Instead, it is time to both turn inward and reflect on the implications of Columbus Day itself and how it came to be, and focus on the future." So I hope you guys will reconsider this resolution. Thank you.
Thanks, Amy. Summer Wesley?
Hello, my name is Summer Wesley. I live at 1610 Hollywood Avenue in Norman, Oklahoma. I'm a member of the Choctaw Nation of Oklahoma, and I work on Southeast 66, so I'm very much in contact with the citizenry of OKC, and I conduct business here. Working with the public, I routinely hear members of the Indigenous population express that they feel as if they exist on the fringes rather than being interwoven into the tapestry of this community. Yes, OKC hosts native events like Red Earth, and many Indigenous-run enterprises exist throughout the metro, but there is a very distinct feeling in this community of simply coexisting alongside one another rather than one of inclusion and unity, which I find unfortunate and tragic, and hope to see change in the near future. What this resolution offers is the opportunity to take a proactive step towards reconciliation and unity with the Indigenous population. There's been a lot of talk about the tumultuous history, whether it be the atrocities of Columbus, manifest destiny, boarding school abuses, stereotypes, or any other current issue in Indian country. We don't speak of these things in order to shame you or in an attempt to cause guilt for circumstances that were not within your control. We do so by way of explanation for the current state of relations. After all, history is never solely relegated to the past. It continually forms the present, just as your vote today will formulate the future. As we request, all that we're requesting is that you accept our offer to join with the Indigenous community to build an even stronger legacy in the years to come. As the capital city of our state, you are an example to all others. So make no mistake, there are no neutral positions on issues like this. For example, approving the measure but amending it to fall on another arbitrary day carries not only the implicit rejection of a no, but also the patronizing message that this governing body knows more about what our community needs than those who are a part of it. Dialogue has occurred over the past month, and compromises have actualized. Now it's time to take a stand. It's time to change 2nd Monday in October from one that celebrates crimes against humanity, even if only implicitly endorsed through your silent complicity, to one of unity and reconciliation. The world is watching, and your decision today will let them know what Oklahoma City stands for. I sincerely hope that it is for progress, inclusivity, and a unified tomorrow, and that you will demonstrate this by voting yes on the proposed resolution. Yeah, okay.
Deborah Batiste-Samassi?
Deborah Batiste-
Deborah Batiste-Tamasi, 1704 Mooney Drive, Durant, Oklahoma. Formerly of Oklahoma City, formerly of the Par Post Adjudicated Review Board of the Courts for ICWA, formerly of Dewey Street and 15th, and thank you, Mayor Cornet, manager, city manager, and the councillor, barrister, left councillor Jordan, and the rest of the ward representatives. And I also would like to just say, thank you, Councilman White. I was a high school all-state band performing our concert in the Skirvin Hotel. So, that brought a lot of joy to my heart. And that's what I hope and think and respect, that all of you will take into consideration these comments. A little city like Anadarko, Oklahoma, as small as it is, mayor, 49%, the statistics, 49% Indigenous and Native American. Riverside Indian School, which is there, the last Bureau of Indian Affairs and Government Boarding School financed in our state, progressing, looking beautiful. Seventy-four Native American tribes represented from all, all across the 50 states and reservations. Back when I worked at Oklahoma City in Indian clinic here in the city, I noticed, mayor, the great things that you and this council have done for Oklahoma City. You continue to do great things, and setting a role model and example is definitely one of them. This is a hard, hard decision probably, to put it off, not put it off, but to reconsider, and I look at that, that you had from your heart. When I walked into this room, behind that screen, I saw a pipe on our seal, our seal of the city of Oklahoma City. And I thought, oh, good, because I knew what that meant culturally. I knew that meant that nothing but honesty and truth could prevail in this room, that that's what that would represent in my culture as a Choctaw Chickasaw. Twenty-nine, thirty seconds is what the BIA say I have. Fifteen, sixteen is what my family says I have, like the young lady that talked about living in two worlds. But what I say about this particular day, this particular decision, is that I am a fifth-generation survivor of the 1830s trail of tears coming to this, this land, which formerly was called IT, Indian Territory. Indian Territory, and I respect our relatives and neighbors and everyone that did come here and created the state, the Sooner State, because it's progressed, and we continue to progress and continue to grow. This decision is not an easy decision for you, I'm sure. Like my third grade teacher, when all of this history came out about the third grade, she called me and said, Debbie Batiste, would you stay in for recess? I was embarrassed and I almost ashamed, but I did what she said because she was the authority. And I sat down and I said, Ms. Hughes? She said, Debbie, what do you think about white people? What do you think about the European people? And I thought, oh, like my mother, I must have popped off during American history and said something, made me have to stay in for recess. I said, Ms. Hughes, I think it's how you treat me. I can't help what my ancestors did to your people. I can't help what your ancestors did to my people. I think what really matters today is how you treat me and how I treat you. And she said, Debbie, go to recess. That was a relief. I hope today is going to be a relief, mayor, and thank all of you very much for our time.
Thank you. Carolyn Chowning.
Hi, I'm speaking today in my capacity as board president for the Oklahoma Coalition for Reproductive Justice, which operates in solidarity with individuals and groups supporting this resolution to recognize yesterday's federal holiday locally as Indigenous Peoples' Day. The Oklahoma Coalition for Reproductive Justice bases our work in the Universal Declaration of Human Rights. Yesterday's holiday is a direct celebration of colonialism and genocide. Discussion of Christopher Columbus cannot be separated from the unbroken, continued history of genocide in this country and in this place. Violence against women, boarding schools, forced sterilization, violations of the Indian Child Welfare Act, and failure of the United States to uphold treaties by providing adequate health services. These are current, these are contemporary, these are concerns that affect Oklahoman families. This is reproductive oppression and exists in the context of ongoing conquest. Jacquin Agtuka in 2005 said sexual assault rates and violence against Native women did not just drop from the sky. They are a process of history. We urge you to vote for Indigenous Peoples' Day, and in addition to my prepared organizational statement, I'd like to share a personal story. Because our personal discomfort in acknowledging genocide is not a sufficient reason to refuse to act. I live in Southside, Oklahoma City, in Ward Four, and I appreciate your leadership, but I grew up in Dayton, Ohio, immensely proud of our roots and history. For example, my first job was working as a historical interpreter of, at the Wright Brothers' Bicycle Shop and Small Press. But it wasn't until later that I learned that Southern Ohio was also the birthplace of the Ku Klux Klan. To paraphrase, to paraphrase Maya Angelou, when we know better, we can do better, and often we choose not to, and this is the case with Columbus Day. To not recognize the history of our places is to do violence, not only towards our ancestors and peoples living in the past. To not recognize the history of our places is to perpetuate the past violence in the present, to do violence against ourselves and our neighbors, to educate our children in hatred, white supremacy, and colonialism. My mother immigrated with her parents following World War II, and I'm sharing this because I believe there's more than one of you resistant to this resolution that's based on avoiding your personal culpability in genocide. My mother was raised to prioritize silence over truth, secrecy over honesty, and not acknowledging what came before us. One of my great-grandfathers was a legal, was a leader in the organization of Ukrainian nationalists, and my mother's father fought in World War II as part of the Ukrainian Waffen SS in the Nazi Army, the First Galician Division. So there is a motivation to protect or to hide not only personal culpability for war crimes, but complicity in nationalist genocide, and this is the case with Columbus Day. Today, my sister and I try to share stories of Ukrainian involvement in World War II, and the invasion of Poland, and countless massacres and pogroms, because these systematic abuses of human rights are not distant, they are not vague, and they are well documented. Again, this is the case with Columbus Day. The systematic human rights abuses that continue in our unbroken history of genocide as part of the legacy of Christopher Columbus are not distant, they are not vague, and they are well documented, and painfully overdue for Oklahoma to acknowledge. Thanks.
Thank you. Kimberly Stratum-Franco.
Good morning. I'm Kimberly Stratum-Franco, 1313 Northeast 50th. I appreciate your time, Mayor Cornet, my councilperson, John Pettis, and my good friend Meg Salyer. I'm here today absolutely in support of this particular resolution. I am a lifelong native of Oklahoma City, born and reared here as my mother was. My father was born on reservation not too far from Arino, Oklahoma, and family in Lima, Oklahoma. We have rich history, lots of diversity, and I stand before you not only for myself, but for my children, but most importantly, for my granddaughter, Elliot Ophelia. It is imperative that we move forward as our city, as our state, and of all places here in this great state of Oklahoma, and what it represents in the, on the larger scale, what this state was identified long before it was a state, as Indian Territory with Indigenous folk being moved here, being displaced here, and then eventually us once again breaking treaties, breaking promises, and opening this land. And again, you know, the whole idea of discovering, of founding, and determining that even on this small patch of land known as Indian Territory, someone I'm sure decided, oh, there must be oil in them their hills, so let us go once again and take this. We don't have to read far, we don't have to dig very far at all to fully comprehend the comprehensive nature of what was going on with Christopher Columbus. If you haven't had opportunity to read Howard Zinn's A People's History, I would strongly encourage you to do so, and you don't have to go far. First chapter, Columbus, The Indians, and Human Progress. I'd like to just share with you very quickly from his log, from the log of Christopher Columbus, as he landed only a quarter, one-fourth of the way where he was intending to go. He was looking for gold, he was looking for silk, he was looking for Asia. One-fourth of the way he landed in what is now known as the Bahamas, met by Indigenous people, and in his own words, "They brought us parrots and balls of cotton and spears and many other things, which they exchanged for the glass beads and hawk's bells. They willingly traded everything they owned. They were well-built, with good bodies and handsome features. They do not bear arms and do not know them, for I showed them a sword. They took it by the edge and cut themselves out of ignorance. They have no iron; their spears are made of cane. They would make fine servants. With fifty men, we could subjugate them all and make them do whatever we want." The author of this particular book, Howard Zinn, expresses what many of us know on our personal journeys and the histories that we learned or the histories that we didn't learn, the things our teachers never taught us. He speaks of how history being whitewashed and not fully understanding how people of color were presented, and then they were invisible. There were Indians, and then there were none. There were black folks, there was slavery, they were free, and then there were none. It was a white man's history.
Kimberly, wrap it up.
I am, I'm going to wrap it up right now. But here, from first grade to graduate school, I was given no inkling that the landing of Christopher Columbus in the New World initiated a genocide in which the Indigenous population of Hispanola was annihilated, or that this was just the first stage of many genocides. Louisiana Purchase, Florida Purchase, Mexican Cessation. I encourage you, I urge you, I implore you, today, if not today, when? Today. Let's do this. It's the right thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Sarah Adams-Cornell.
Good morning, just barely, council members. Albuquerque, Anadarko, Portland.
Sarah, I need your name and address.
Sarah Adams-Cornell, 2833 Northwest 43rd Street, Oklahoma City. Albuquerque, Anadarko, Portland, St. Paul, Olympia, Multnomah County, Traverse City, Sandoval County, Lawrence, Alpena, Bexar County, the Choctaw Nation, the Muskogee Creek Nation, the University of Oklahoma, Oklahoma City University. These are just a few in the past weeks. How many more cities do we have to watch lap us before we decide it's time to honor Native people? Chief Gary Batten of the Choctaw Nation of Oklahoma asked me to read this on his behalf. To whom it may concern, the Choctaw Nation of Oklahoma has proclaimed the second Monday in October as Indigenous Peoples' Day to educate and promote the significance of the contributions made by the Choctaw people to the United States of America and the state of Oklahoma. On behalf of the Choctaw Nation of Oklahoma, I would like to encourage the city council of Oklahoma to, of Oklahoma City, to join us in recognizing Indigenous Peoples' Day on the second Monday in October. We have many letters like this from tribes and non-native organizations, all which have sent these to your offices as well and made many phone calls to your offices. Many of these people are here today to show you that it's more than just Native community asking for this change. Don't misunderstand the impact of Indigenous Peoples' Day. It's not just to honor Indigenous people. Christopher Columbus and his legacy are painful for Native people. It is painful. And it is that very reason why the second Monday in October is poignant. We don't want another day chosen for us by you, nor do we want to be treated like children who don't know what's best for them. We are an intelligent, resilient people, and we know what's best for us. When a community of color comes to you as a united group with a request, you must listen and understand that we know what's best for us. Part of the problem is that this city council doesn't much look like Oklahoma City. So put yourselves in our shoes and look at the city through our eyes because you don't have that learned experience of being in our shoes. I've watched you vote within seconds to allocate millions of dollars, and it takes you two sessions to bring us justice that costs the city nothing. This is a matter of justice. It, it isn't difficult, this is easy. And telling us that the city council doesn't make holidays feels like a cop-out to me. You make proclamations to honor people and organizations all the time. If it needs to be a proclamation, let's make it a proclamation. But don't change the date to get us off your agenda. This issue has united, has united Native people like never before in our city. We are organizing, we are getting registered to vote, and we will remember the way that we have been treated in your chambers. I know the citizens of Oklahoma City reached out to your office in a big way. These citizens should, should set the agenda and have spoken loud and clear. Honor the voice of your committee, community, and your Native American people. Thank you.
Thanks, Sarah. Alicia Anzawa. Okay. Jackie Holder.
My name's Jacqueline Holder, and I'm a resident of Oklahoma City. I reside at 4401 Northwest 39th Street. I'd like to first of all thank you for your time. I am a longtime resident, lifetime resident of Oklahoma City. I am a homegrown product of Oklahoma City Public Schools, a graduate of Northwest Claston High School, and also a graduate of Oklahoma City University. I am a enrolled member of the Comanche Nation of Oklahoma, and I am currently the chairperson for the Parent Advisory Committee for Native American Student Services. I represent over 2,000-plus students in 86 tribes here in Oklahoma City Public School District. We, as a committee, are endorsing Indigenous Peoples' Day. We would ask the city council to, to please adopt this day. In my research, I have come across, and my predecessors have done so well, in naming the atrocities that are related to Columbus Day, the statistics of all the issues that are plaguing Indian country. So I won't go so much into that. I would like to say that the constant use of Native American imagery such as mascots and Halloween costumes, and even as tourist attractions, and even Columbus Day parades and celebrations deplete the self-esteem of Native people, especially our young people. We need to acknowledge our struggle that has been 500-plus years now of oppression, and we are still here, and we're thriving, and we have governments that do not even recognize Columbus Day. In our governments surrounding this area, we celebrate Indigenous Peoples' Day. And continuously undermining the contribution of our people undermines the self-esteem and the contribution of Native people. And our young Native people are suffering. We have some of the lowest graduation rates. We have addiction, we have suicide, we have all of these issues that I believe as a social worker contribute directly from constant demeaning of Native self, self imagery. I would like to, everyone to know that these young people who are, believe that they don't matter, grow up to be adult people who believe they don't matter. And some of them are here in this room, and we're asking you, for our children, to please vote for Indigenous Peoples' Day. I would like to say, in closing, that there are two day, two federal holidays that's, that are honoring specific people. One we are here for, and the second is Martin Luther King Day. One is the founding father of the civil rights movement. One spoke for love and tolerance and equality for all people. The other is the founding father of the Indigenous Holocaust. And he was a racist, and he was a murderer, and he was a slave trader. And we hope that throughout today and the, and the things that you've heard from all different races of people, from all different areas and arenas.
Jackie, you need to wrap it up.
And all different areas and arenas, that you would consider adopting Indigenous Peoples' Day. Thank you. Goodness.
Bella Cornell.
Bella Cornell, 2833 Northwest 43rd Street. Hello everyone, my name is Bella Cornell and I'm Choctaw. I'm 14-years-old. I'm the daughter of an activist and resident and I myself am an inspiring activist. I am also the OK CPS Native American Student Services student representative. Ladies and gentlemen, I come before you today in support of Indigenous Peoples' Day. I ask that you too be in support of this holiday. The reason is this: we should not honor a man who raped, enslaved, tortured and murdered thousands of indigenous people. Ask yourselves this: would I honor a man who committed all of these crimes with a holiday? To put it differently, would you honor Hitler with a holiday? Absolutely not. So why? Why, why, why would you honor Columbus with a holiday? It is literally the same thing. Indigenous people do take this to be an offensive holiday. It's a holiday full of racism for the Native community, we see it that way. By supporting Indigenous Peoples' Day, you won't just be supporting a step towards something greater and better, but also the betterment and education of our communities. You should always be ready to change for the better. I ask you, as council members, to help our voices be heard and to not let us go unseen or unheard. You are the voices and the role models for Oklahoma City. It is your job and duty to make sure you really are ready to change. Please honor us as indigenous people, our history and change the holiday. Yoko, thank you for your time.
D.O. Smalling.
Good morning, everybody. Thank you for having this legitimate debate. And my name is DG Smalling. I live on 518 Northwest 12th Street here in Oklahoma City. Longtime residence. After I came back to the United States from working in the Balkans during the conflicts there, I made residence here because I had family connections. I came here because of diversity. I came here because I enjoyed the space that was made for the South Vietnamese. I enjoyed the markets, I enjoyed knowing that there was representation for them, that they were embraced here, that their holidays were valued, that districts and spaces were made for them. And so it's very funny that being a Choctaw member, we have to debate this point. We have to talk about these things. The fact that we're having to talk about it means that there are historical schisms and as people, responsibility that we vote for and that we respect and people that I admire, you know, it falls on you. The fact that we're fleshing this out still speaks to what our nation has a process of perfecting this union, making this union more complete. Now, you've heard over and over again about the character and nature of this man and the value of this sort of resolution, the value of proposing this, isn't for me. It isn't for you. It's for that little infant back there who doesn't have to be raised with that memory, with that baggage. It is to understand that when we put someone in front of our children on a holiday, we are saying, "Be like this person." Now, my parents are missionaries. My parents worked on sex trafficking issues and have for 15 years. The mind and conscience of such a man, and I have encountered these people in the Balkans, is so malevolent that to validate such a man questions the validator. There is no question, there is no option. Whether you're a Christian, whether you're, from our perspective, a traditionalist, whether you're agnostic and atheist, such a person is an anathema and should be rejected. And for that, I wish that you would give this time to consider and to act upon it because I don't believe that there is an option. It's like what Francis Schaeffer said, you know, "How then shall we live?" Well, we're fleshing that right now. We're fleshing it out and we would ask that you would let us live with respect, mutual respect, to perfect this union of what is not only the United States, not only Oklahoma, but Oklahoma City. And I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Johnny J., 2309 Northwest 38, Lawton, Oklahoma. Today you are being presented a unique opportunity to create a new legacy, not just for the city, not just for the state, but for this country. In 2010, Dr. Celso, who is an Italian-American historian, asserted that in 1892, when Benjamin Harris, our president at the time, made this a national holiday, which was 400 years after the exploration of Columbus. It was done specifically to bring Native Americans, Italian-Americans and others together. However, you cannot bring people together or reconcile past wrongs by celebrating a man responsible for the rape, enslavement and genocide of any people. Now you can look this up because Columbus Day was instituted only two years after Wounded Knee and a year after the largest lynching in U.S. history, which was that of Italians in 1891. So it wasn't really a day to celebrate Italian-American history. It was a day to pacify racial tensions that existed against Italian-American people at the time. But Indigenous Peoples' Day can be a day that can truly unify us all. It does not have to be exclusively Native, but a celebration of the people and cultures indigenous to homelands outside of the U.S. It can be a day that could bring us all together to celebrate, appreciate and educate each other about who we are as human beings. It is a day that could easily transition into the amount, excuse me, into the Italian-American Heritage Month, that then transitions into Native American History Month. More importantly, it is a day that does not have to hold the expectation of any people to be grateful or to celebrate the erasure of their history, the marginalization of their genocide and the man responsible for the beginning of that genocide. So I implore you to take this opportunity to create a new legacy for our country, one in which we can be truly unified and celebrate each other for who we are, not as indigenous people, not just as Italian-Americans or Irish-Americans, but as human beings. So thank you very much.
Bunkey Echo Hawk.
Noah, my name is Bunkey Echo Hawk, 2018, Pawnee, Oklahoma. Greetings, Mayor, council members. Appreciate the opportunity to speak here. Most importantly, I am the daddy of the baby in the back of the room that was mentioned moments ago. Kind of put me on the spot, put a lump in my throat, you know, to, you know, have my son pointed out in that way. I have volumes of things that, you know, I could, could, you know, recite to you guys. But one thing that really, you know, struck, struck me, you know, is the fact that when Columbus Day was, you know, first enacted in the late 1890s, that was a time before we were even United States citizens, before we had the right to vote, before we had a seat at the table or were able to stand at a podium like this. And I just wanted to stress that because now that's what we want, is a seat at the table. We want the opportunity to have our voice considered on an equal basis. And it's about being included, it's inclusive. The, the holiday that we are proposing, this Indigenous Peoples' Day, it is about being inclusive. It's about welcoming our neighbors into our, our homes, into our culture, having a seat at our table to feed them. You know, seat at the, on the outskirts of our harbor when we have our dances and so on and so forth. And the date is very important. We've all heard what's becoming more and more as rhetoric, you know, the, the true history of Columbus. And to me, it's not about erasing Columbus, it's not about putting Columbus away. It's about building upon that. It's about including Columbus, his legacy, the truth about him, but building upon that and including us and having a seat at this table. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anthony Williamson.
Greetings, Hala Joe, so glad to be here today.
Need your name and address for the record, Anthony.
My name is Anthony Williamson, 410 East Kentucky, Anadarko, Oklahoma. So glad to be here today. I want to thank you guys for allowing us to speak today. Thank for everybody that's here to come support and support this day. I just want to say, the name that was given to me is Anthony Williamson, but my name that I go by is Tonga Day. That means man standing in water. Today I stand in waters of truth and I pray that these rivers of truth that these people have spoken will flow from this place across the great state of Oklahoma. In this place, if you haven't noticed, there are 28 Indian heads with 28 war bonnets on your light fixtures. And today I ask you, do you honor us or are we simply a decoration? We're here today because of what Columbus means to us. It's a horrible thing that took place and you've heard a lot of the accounts and it hasn't even been said, really, what, what took place. On April the 19th, 1995, a bomb exploded at the Murrow Building. A horrible terrorist act occurred, one that affected every one of us. I was only blocks away when I saw the smoke rise and I felt the blast that took place. But because of that, we all joined together, because of all that, because of what took place, it brought us together as one voice, one mind, one fire. And we determined that day that we would join hands together and stand up and rise up together and dare the world to knock us down. And I ask you today, I would never ask that day to be called Timothy McVeigh Day. Neither should the day, October of every year, be called Columbus Day. I move that this city council, join with us, join hands with us, join together. Let's rise up together, let's stand together, let's help one another like we know how to do, regardless of race, creed, let's join together and let's tell the world what's right. Thank you very much.
Priya Desai. Jaysha Echo Hawk.
Noah, council, my name is Jaysha Lyons-Echo Hawk. I live at 2018 Timberland in Pawnee, Oklahoma. I'm enrolled Seminole Creek, but I'm also Pawnee, Omaha and Iowa. The definition of indigenous is produced, growing, living or occurring naturally in a particular region or environment. To use the term indigenous is simply to better state the original inhabitants of this country. Indigenous is more inclusive than American Indian or Native American as there are 370 indigenous, excuse me, 370, 370 million indigenous people or 5,000 different groups or nations of indigenous people worldwide. That's as many as 4,000 still speaking their indigenous languages. Thirty-nine federally recognized nations reside in Oklahoma, making it the second most populous state of the, in the Union of, for indigenous residents. Of these 39 nations, 36,572 indigenous people reside in Oklahoma City, making it the fourth city in the U.S. with the most indigenous residents. Knowing these numbers, it is clear that providing a limited view of these unique and varied people through red earth powwow and exhibition dancing is dismally narrow. Knowing these numbers, it is clear that a major city like Oklahoma City offering one pan-Indian event to the community, to the visiting public, is selling itself short. Knowing these numbers, will Oklahoma City not see the value in accepting this resolution as an opportunity to originate and create one of the biggest confluences of cultural celebration in the heart of Indian Territory? We have an opportunity, Oklahoma City, to build a brand-new event that honors and celebrates indigenous people through art like Bunkey Echo Hawk and Shane Goshorn, through film like Sterling Hardrow and Stephen Paul Judd, through fashion like Joseph Koschewei and Shawnee Designs, through sport like Sam Bradford, who was an Oklahoma City resident. Indigenous people are more than powwows, they are more than just dance. Indigenous people are like you, council members. They are business owners, doctors, entertainers, filmmakers, Nike consultants, professional athletes, and all these folks I just named are indigenous and Oklahoman. Peop, indigenous people need to be celebrated and can be honored through a festival that can rival Santa Fe's Indian Art Market or Albuquerque's Gathering of Nations, which both nonprofit organizations have been able to bring in $20 million a day for their respective host cities and as many as 150,000 visitors from around the world. And the day does matter. The day is sensitive. The resolution is meant to be time-specific because we, Oklahoma City, have to acknowledge some things that make us uncomfortable, that make us want to turn away and perhaps shuffle off. These things we have brought up are not any more easy to share than it is for you to hear them. But they have to be known so we don't make the same mistakes, so we don't, excuse me, so we can have a fresh, full future. And I'm happy to be here, to stand before you, Oklahoma City Council, to be able to share. I am here, a contemporary person, the product of a lineage of ancestors who fought to be here. I am the 2% that still remains. And that needs to be acknowledged because it is beautiful and that beauty can be manifested into an incredible hallmark for this great city. Please allow us our Indigenous Peoples' Day as requested. Please allow us to give back to the city, this community, because as much as this day is for us, it is for you as well. Please vote yes. Madoff.
Gay Pasley. Samantha Crane.
Hala Joe, my name is Samantha Crane, 902 North University. As a professional musician, I travel all over this world and this country. Alaska, California, New Mexico, Arizona. I've, I've met lots of people in indigenous tribes and have formed kinships with them. I've noticed and experienced that many of these places are making great strides in celebrating, recognizing the continued culture of tribes of people that have for 500 years been marginalized and forgotten while residing on the very land that their ancestors inhabited long before colonization. As you're most likely aware already, Oklahoma has the second most proportional percentage population of Native Americans in the U.S. as well as the second most actual individual population of Native Americans in the U.S. So what I'm asking and what everyone that's come up here is asking is not representative of a small constituency. We're talking about half a million people within these state borders and a large percentage of the people that reside in this city as well. So what we're asking is the second Monday of October be recognized as Indigenous Peoples' Day instead of Columbus Day. It'd be a true representation of the actual history of this state and the land on which the city stands. We have the name of the state is Oklahoma. Comes from the Choctaw where it's okla and huma, meaning red people. The state was Indian Territory long before the Choctaws came here and other tribes through the Trail of Tears. There's evidence that the Wichitas, the Caddo, they've been here for thousands of years. So thirdly, there's a matter of my own experience. Being a musician, I go to all these music festivals and I, I endure on it constantly. Being a musician, I go to all these music festivals and I endure on it constantly cultural appropriation that goes on at these events. And I think a lot of this is just ignorance on the original people that are from this country. And I think a huge thing here, if we could change this Columbus Day to Indigenous Peoples' Day, that's going to seep into the education of the kids that are coming up in this country. It's going to make more sense to them why these are sensitive issues, why using these images aren't appropriate and are actually very harmful. So anyways, I just think Indigenous Peoples' Day, it's more accurate for where this state stands than celebrating a man that has a history of genocide and assimilation. I think it's more important to celebrate a history of diversity and freedom and culture. So as an active resident and artistic representative of this state and its people, this is what I'm asking you with fervor and with reason. I think it just makes sense.
Thanks. As you all know, our meetings are recorded, and when the meeting starts to push four hours, we have to change out the recording device, so I'm going to ask for a five-minute recess. If we can get settled, we'll rejoin the meeting. Okay. Ashley McCray?
Hi, my name's Ashley McCray, 1528 Elk Circle. I am a PhD student at the University of Oklahoma. I'm a historian, and I am an enrolled tribal member of the Absentee Shawnee Tribe of Oklahoma. Greetings, Council and Mayor. I am standing here before you today urging you to act honorably by passing the resolution to recognize the Second Monday of October as Indigenous Peoples' Day. As one of the authors behind the OU resolution, I am filled with joy and goodwill because our leaders made the choice to listen to its indigenous community by celebrating indigenous knowledge, culture, and contributions. Yesterday's celebration is already paving the way for collaboration, as well as a general sense of belonging for the indigenous communities. We are no longer in the margins. There is no division, in fact, quite the opposite. There is only joy, laughter, happiness, and dancing, singing, eating, sharing, and stories. Non-indigenous peoples joined with us in dancing and stickball games. I was greeted by many who thanked us for including them. Yesterday, our community was reminded that we are a vital component of the social fabric at OU. Oklahoma, oklahama, is home to 39 federally recognized tribes. Oklahoma City boasts one of the highest populations of native residents in the nation. What we are asking for here today is by no means controversial or divisive. We aren't asking the community to dwell on the wrongs of the past. We are instead asking you to be a part of us, picking up and moving forward together. Seattle, Portland, Anadarko, Albuquerque, and cities all over the nation are part of this large and collective movement. As my brother Tushka said back there, this is all over social media, everybody is watching. Today, all eyes are on Oklahoma, watching to see whether the Oklahoma City Council, you, will be able to do the right thing by passing this resolution. I implore you all to be brave and to listen to the actual native bodies, the community who have now stood in front of you three times telling you what we need. If you fear the potential of folks coming back in and demanding you reinstall Columbus Day on the Second Monday of every October, I assure you, I guarantee you, there is no logical or contable argument or defense for celebrating a person responsible for the transatlantic slave trade, the genocide of people, the trafficking and sexual exploitation of young children, or a person who never even stepped foot on this continent. Columbus does not do justice to the Italian-American community. Everybody can do better. Please know the nation is watching, and the decision you make here today sends a clear and loud message regarding your desire and intention to include indigenous peoples in the fabric of Oklahoma City. I pray you keep our words in mind as you vote on this today, but it doesn't matter if you feel like you are ready or not. The time is now, the time is today. Niyeawe.
Reverend Dr. David Wilson, 115 Northwest 20th. Sisters and brothers, as I look across this room in the back and as I came in, I would dare to guess it's about 30 tribes represented in this room. And although our tribes are so different, the one thing we do have in common is our spirituality as Native American people. I currently serve as the conference superintendent of the Oklahoma Indian Missionary Conference United Methodist Church. About 87 Indian Methodist churches across Oklahoma, Kansas, Texas, and now Missouri. Four of those churches are located in the Oklahoma City area. Our existence began long before the tribes, our tribes were removed to Indian Territory. Before removal, Cherokee's Choctaws, Creeks, Muskegon Creeks were visited by Methodist evangelists who converted many of our people to Christianity and to Methodist. And so at that time, our people began doing what Methodist do, we began to create churches in those home states. It'd be about two years later that the government would forcibly remove all of our people to Indian Territory. But when the very first things those men and women did, facing death, starvation, persecution along that journey, when they arrived in Indian Territory was to create Methodist churches. So if you're traveling the far southeastern part of the state, in northeast Oklahoma, you will see Methodist churches that have been in existence for over 180 years. We indeed, as I remind my sisters and brothers across the Oklahoma Conference, that we are the mother church of Methodism for the state of Oklahoma. So where people proud of our spiritual heritage, where lives is ceremonial and Christian people that contribute greatly not just to this state but to Oklahoma City. It is the spirituality of our people that has carried our ancestors and us to the darkest moments of our lives. There's also a spirituality that's allowed us to offer forgiveness for the past sins of the world and to do what we're doing today to move ahead to a brighter future. As I look across this room today, all of us gathered from all nations, all places. I'm reminded what a diverse and beautiful tapestry, spectacular of people, of God's beauty, a small reminder how beautiful God must be, God's creativity that made this world what it is today, people created in the image of God. As a pastor, I have to throw in the scripture, 1 Corinthians, Chapter 12. Apostle Paul, who was attempting to work on unity, said, "So that there should be no division in the body, but its parts should have equal concern for each other. If one part suffers, every part suffers with it. If one part is honored, every part rejoices with it." Oklahoman and Cherokee author Bernard Strickland writes in the last chapter of his book, Indians in Oklahoma, Sisters and Brothers, published in 1980, listen to these words. And he says, "How can we learn what the Indian has to offer? We can begin by appreciating the philosophy, religion, or literature, music, and dance of the Native Americans." But the basic question is, when will we recognize Oklahoma's Indian religions, philosophy, literature, and the large body of native painting, poetry, and prose? The story of the Indian is the literature of America. It is not trying to say that the Indian sings the songs of the forest, of our birds, of our souls, for his world is our world. He is America, and he is American. Thank you, sisters and brothers, for your time, and I urge your vote for this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. David Bear Shield? Maddie Haybeck?
CEO Nigada. I'm Maddie Haybeck. I live at 1111 Oak Tree Avenue in Norman, Oklahoma. I am a student, a graduate student at the University of Oklahoma studying political and intercultural communication. I also intern here in Oklahoma City at the Capitol, as well as I'm a teaching assistant for my department. I wanted to come speak to you today and encourage you to pass this resolution. Indigenous Peoples' Day means a great deal to the community, as I'm sure you've seen from everybody speaking today. We're all very passionate about it, and we recognize how important it is for our future and for our youth and for our community. I'm also the president of the Native American Sorority at OU, so I'm speaking on their behalf. Let's see. So just to start off with some history, let's be honest, Columbus was lost, right? And he was wrong. I'm not an Indian, I'm indigenous. I'm Chalaghi. He was a mass murderer, and as you've heard, he committed countless unspeakable atrocities. When you allow this kind of a person to be celebrated, what kind of message does that send to our community? What kind of message does that send to our children? Our communities, as mentioned before, suffer from high rates of addiction, from suicide, from sexual assault. We have the highest rate of sexual assault for our women in any minority community in the United States. It's one in three. That is absolutely unfathomable. So if you allow Columbus Day to continue to be a holiday rather than replacing it with Indigenous Peoples' Day, what kind of message does that send? We should be supporting these communities rather than to allow them to be continually torn down, and by rejecting this, symbolically, that's what you're doing. We need to be built up. What do you have to lose from this? You have everything to gain. You're not just showing support and solidarity for the native community, but you're also showing support and solidarity for any historically oppressed community. You're showing that you are listening and that you care about your constituents' wants and needs. And I think that is so important as a public official, to really send that message and mean it to your community. That's who you represent. We are who you represent. If you say no... If you say no, we won't quit, and I'm sure you know this, this being the third time we've come to you. We are a strong and resilient people, and as you can see, this issue is very close to our hearts. Also, I just want to say that it's inevitable for Indigenous Peoples' Day to become a federal holiday. This is just the first wave. This is the beginning. You've seen how many towns, cities, everywhere. There's universities, and there's a big wave for Indigenous Peoples' Day being recognized. You could be a leader, a leader. Be in that first wave. Don't be shamed into it later. Just start now and make a symbolic effort to create a change for the community. It's so important with the high population of native peoples in our state and in this city, that we recognize them and show them their importance, not only just for our history but for our future. It's an opportunity for us to heal historical trauma together, and it'll resonate not only through this city but through the state and the nation as well. I urge you to be a leader and to create a brighter future for our indigenous populations and the community together as a whole.
Hello, my name is Charles Eisenberger. I live at 14512 Silene Way in Oklahoma City, right there in Tornado Alley. I'm very proud to be here, to be able to speak. I knew I was coming, but my friend signed me up, so I'm glad she did. I'm Kiwa Potawatomi in German, hence the name Eisenberger, but I come from the Silverhorn families and the Dumbo families. Silverhorn and Dumbo, Dumbo translates to flute in the Kiwa language. I just recently graduated from OU. I'm 45 years old. I went back to school after 23 years, and I had some brain cells left enough to graduate from OU. So, yesterday I was at the university and I saw something really beautiful. I've been on the road for about four months after graduating. I just wanted to travel. So I got back, 3:00 in the morning, the day before yesterday, and I didn't know about what was going on at OU. But when I got there, I started to realize the significance of the day. And I've always been a firm believer in acknowledging indigenous people. I would like to say that atrocities were committed. A lot of people brought that up today. We can't change that, but what we can do is show the world that is watching all of us today, that we do have hearts in Oklahoma. We do care about what we represent to our community, to the tribes, to our people, to our children, to our grandchildren, to our people that aren't even born yet. They'll look at this day, and I'll be able to look back at this day and know that I was here with all of you in this room, and we did something very beautiful today for our human race. I thank you for your time. You guys have a beautiful day.
Michael Washington?
Yes, yes, that's me. Thank you so much, sir. Greetings to all of you and to your illustrious guests out here. Today, we are speaking about an Indigenous Day possibly for you great people who deserve to be recognized for the contributions you've made to make humanity what it is today. Secondly, even before I get so deeply into that situation, let me say first of all, how can a man named Columbus discover America when it's people, your people, were already here? You can't possibly discover something that you have to discover to be the first one present as far as I understand the matter is concerned. As a matter of fact, too, he really didn't even, he wasn't even the second person to discover outside the indigenous people. Matter of fact, that was a little black guy at the top of the scope that said, "Hey, master, go this way." A lot of people don't know about that, do they? I don't believe this city council is gonna pass anything for you because they don't care about you. Straight up. If they cared about you, conditions in our communities would be far greater than they are today. We have to realize one thing, too, my good, great people, indigenous people. Your life matters despite what these people think. They don't care about your condition. They don't care about your economic arrangements. All they care about is passing something for the powers that be who run this great state of Oklahoma. When the Europeans came to America and stole from you, killed your people, stole your land, deprived your children of education, they were telling you what they thought about you. As a matter of fact, they stole your name, your history, your language, your culture, and everything that's said about you. Well, today, we're not gonna allow that history to be hidden any longer. And I say to you, this city council, prove me, Michael Washington, wrong, and I will stand up greatly as a man in my word with all these witnesses who say, praise God, these people did what was good. But I don't think I'm gonna believe it. Why? Because the powers that be want you to keep things as they are. Why not give these people something of pride and belief in themselves? Enjoying it would make me feel great that I could stand up and say, hey, these people recognizing Indigenous Day for me, that means that I'm great, I'm important, that I can make a difference in life, in society. As a matter of fact, too, a lot of you probably had ancestors who were raised by indigenous people, who otherwise would have been lost, as they say, in the sauce. All praise is due to God. So I say to you again, I represent not only African-American community, because we have a diverse group of people there, but I represent humanity. And as a matter of fact, people might see Michael Washington when he walks through that door, I don't sidewind. I don't play, and I don't ride with anybody that I don't believe is real. As a matter of fact, once again, I respect you esteemed council members, but I will not side and ride with you if you're in justice. And I don't care if you're outside, inside, on top of a roof. If God is for you, he's more than the whole world is against you. So I'm saying to y'all today, give these great people the right that their children can stand and say, Mama, Daddy, what does indigenous people mean to me? Why, why don't they ain't recognized for me? Huh?
Michael, that's your time's up.
My time's up? Oh, my God, I was just getting started. Thank you.
We had a couple of other pieces of paper that looked like they were duplicates of people that had already spoken. Is there anyone who wanted to speak and hasn't had a chance yet? Yes, yes, come on forward. Did you want to speak on this matter?
Oh, do you want people to speak?
Yeah, no, it needs to be on this matter at this point. Okay. I'm sorry, I should have been more clear. Okay.
Well, I'm gonna move the resolution as it exists, but I'm gonna make a couple of comments before I do that. It is obvious to me that this is not going to be, it would not be a satisfactory solution to the people that are supporting this resolution if the date is changed. It seems to me that one of the things that's been, that's been made very clear is the insult that the indigenous people of this country feel about this date being named in honor of Columbus. And I don't think we can escape that. I, I've been approached with the idea that we change the date, and after listening to people today, I don't believe any of the people that spoke would be willing to change the date, and I understand that. I do understand it. I've had contacts with other people, and one of the big comments was that this is an effort to revise history. But it seems to me this is just the opposite of that. This is an effort to bring history back in line with what really happened. You know, there have been a lot of things over the last several years where history has been revised. A number of the so-called massacres or battles or whatever you want to refer to them, you know, if George Custer's wife had not have been so adamant about trying to make him a hero, we would have really known what happened at Little Big Horn and what happened at Sandy Creek and what happened at all these other places in western Oklahoma in the Black Kettle Situation. We would have known that 100 years ago. But she was a great PR person and did the same thing. I believe the Italian-Americans were a great PR people for Columbus. I think if we were talking about the 2nd Monday in October being Italian-American Day, the date wouldn't make any difference to indigenous people. But they just picked the wrong guy, in my opinion. We've had things happen in Oklahoma City over the last, say, 50 years. You know, Oklahoma City named three schools after Confederate generals. Stonewall Jackson, Robert E. Lee, Jefferson Davis. Jefferson Davis School in Oklahoma City is closed now, and my guess is if the school board built another school in that area, they'd find another name for it. And it's because the lost cause argument that followed the Civil War has now been thrown out. People realize now that the Civil War was about slavery, and we no longer come up with all kinds of obtuse arguments to try to say that it wasn't about that. And so I think the date is gonna be important, and if I could ask one, just one spokesperson to come back before and state whether or not, from your standpoint, you would rather see the resolution go down than have the date changed, I'd just like to know how you feel about it. I'm gonna move it as it is, and we're gonna have a vote on it the way it is, I hope. And would you rather see it fail or would you rather see the date changed?
We are committed to the 2nd Monday in October.
So, with that, I understand the rhetoric today has been passionate, but it's passionate, in my opinion, for a good reason. When a wrong has existed for as long as this wrong has existed, people get passionate about wanting to change it. When people have been subjected to the results of those wrongs, they are passionate about it, and they sound passionate when they, when they make their presentations. And I'm guilty of that myself occasionally, and sometimes that goes off into hyperbole, and I'm good at that, too. But I'm gonna, I'm gonna move the resolution as it exists.
Is there a second?
Can I, can I make, I spoke two weeks ago about the need to recognize the contributions of our indigenous peoples, but I, I think it's important to, number one, be careful when you say things like "your people" or "you people," or, I mean, I think it was pointed out that indigenous peoples is incredibly diverse. It's not homogeneous. There are countless numbers of tribes, languages, culture. I mean, ultimately, this was an event that took place between the Lakaiian people and Columbus and his 1,500 men in the Bahamas. I don't know how many descendants of the Lakaiian people are here today, but it's, it's not just about indigenous peoples, which I think is important, but it's important to my 11, 12, and 14-year-old children and all Americans. And that's really just what I wanted to mention today, is that our federal government made a mistake. They made a tremendous mistake when they made it about Columbus. They didn't say Italian-American Day. They didn't say Discoverers Day. They said Columbus Day. And as Mr. Smalley very eloquently pointed out, my children will now be asked to recognize and question, why is the federal government wanting us to emulate or recognize this person? And they're becoming politically astute, and they're reading, and they're beginning to hear things. I mean, I talked with my children all weekend, and I appreciate this effort because it allowed me to have the conversation with my children, that this was a man who was very myopic, who was obsessed with gold, who felt that if he who possesses has all he needs in the world, and he went back to the queen and he got 17 ships and 1,500 men, and he instituted a historical trauma that was mentioned today. It was a historical trauma in which peoples were given a tribute system to try and produce as much gold as possible. That was the whole purpose of Columbus's mission. And he stepped so far out of bounds that his own peoples, he was eventually arrested and had to be pardoned by the king. He had the Bishop of Chiapas saying things like, "Such inhumanities and barbarisms were committed in my sight as no age can parallel. My eyes have seen these acts so foreign to human nature that now I tremble as I write." There was systematic, not just, you, unfortunately, the Lakaiian people had gold around their necks, so he figured it out. So he instituted a tribute system where you got, if you brought, you had to bring a thimble of gold dust every three months, and if you did, you got a little piece of copper, which is like a get out of jail free card for about three months. If you didn't have it, you could have your hands cut off. And there are estimates of as many as 10,000 people who died without their hands because they were cut off. There were, I had to explain to my children, the sex slave industry and how they, at 12 and 14-years-old, were too old. According to Columbus, in a letter in the year 1500, there are plenty of dealers who go about looking for girls. Those from nine to 10 are now in demand. It was nine and 10-year-old girls that were most in demand. It was those kind of girls that Columbus gave to his lieutenants as a reward. Those are the kind of things that occurred. It is a historical trauma. There were Monteria Infernal, where the Lakaiian people were chased by war dogs and eaten alive. It was so much further than anything we see in today's news with ISIS. We see a few beheadings, but there were systematic beheadings. There were systematic people eaten alive by war dogs. It goes so far beyond anything that we see from ISIS in today's news. And yet, my children are asked by the federal government to recognize this gentleman. It is a historical trauma, and Columbus is on trial. It is important to reject the federal government's request that we honor this war criminal and this person who was so far out of the norms even of that time that his own people ended up arresting him and condemning the barbarism that he instituted. And so for my children and for all the children, I would ask that this council vote to reject Columbus Day and approve the resolution.
Pete's made a motion. Is there a second? Okay. All right, everybody ready to vote? All right, cast your votes, and the motion fails 3 to 5. Motion fails 4 to 5. All right, we're still on items from council. Mark, you have anything for us today?
Excuse me. Week goes Saturday. I was invited to a coalition of seven homeowners associations, Ward 8. They put on a program on crime prevention called The Crime Prevention Through Environmental Design. Settled. So sorry. And the one thing I wanted to do is I wanted to thank the coalition, the seven homeowners associations, for inviting me, but more importantly, I wanted to thank Master Sergeant Robert Henderson and Master Sergeant Bob Scala, who did a wonderful job in presenting that program. And if you haven't seen it, I would recommend that you have your HOAs and your wards see that presentation. It was really good, really well done. Thank you.
Thanks. Ja?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to take the time out to thank Ward 7 for showing up to the Ward 7 Economic Development Town Hall meeting. We had more than 1,000 people to attend the Economic Development Town Hall, and so I just want to again thank the people of Ward 7 for coming out to the town hall, and also the host church, the Greater Mount Olive Baptist Church, Pastor Douglas, for hosting the town hall. We knew that we would have a large amount of people to attend, but 1,000 says a lot, and it shows that the people of northeast Oklahoma City genuinely care about what's happening in northeast Oklahoma City, and they are in support of. And also, I want to thank city staff and the alliance for being a part, and also those who gave presentations. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mm-hmm. Beck?
Thanks, Mayor. I just wanted to apologize for not being here last week. I think most everybody knows I fractured my tibia in a hiking accident. I do want you all to know that I watched all six hours from beginning to end of the meeting and, you know, as we did again today, listened very carefully to what folks had to say. We have procedures and policies in place to do so, and I just, I think all of this discussion is very helpful. After listening to, you know, about 100 people speak on a subject, it's very hard to have an original comment, so I'll just leave it at that.
All right, David?
Thank you, Your Honor, and thank you for your effort, chastity, to making people more... more aware of the importance of watching out for people, pedestrians and bicyclists at your press conference yesterday at Fifty-Ninth and South Penn. The past few weeks, I began riding my bicycle back and forth to work, and as a result, have became more aware of what bicyclists have to endure to get around on the streets in Oklahoma City. Just as Councilman, Councilwoman Salyer and I were talking earlier, she's become more aware of the issues of people with disabilities, and I think we are really close to having a, a city that could accommodate bicyclists better, but I think there's still work ahead, and, and my goal is to help establish routes that I think are a little bit safer than others, whether it's a combination of sidewalks or bike lanes. I think we could certainly help make Oklahoma City a safer area for people who'd like to commute on bicycles.
Yeah, and David reminds us, the program we announced yesterday has, is called Look Out For Me, and it's to remind us motorists to be, be more aware of people that are pedestrians and our new sidewalks and our jogging and biking trails, and that cyclists should wear a helmet, and just kind of a, another round of awareness, we distributed a map of the city that showed where accidents have occurred, and it's all over the place, but largely in the suburban areas, you know, where, where people, you know, may traditionally have not are used to seeing people out walking or people out riding a bike. And we have more people doing that, and I think we need to limit the distractions and try and be more aware and be more safety conscious. And I think the program's a good one that the Public Information Office has established. Larry?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to encourage the neighbors in Corbin area to come to their meeting tomorrow night, excuse me, Thursday night at seven thirty. My wife and I will be there, and we're looking forward to it. And then Windsor Hills has their neighborhood association meeting Saturday morning. Hope you all will get out for that. Thank you, Your Honor.
All right. James? All right. City manager reports.
Mayor, in a lot of the time, I think we should merge that city manager report into the final report that we'll bring back sometime in the next few weeks.
All right. Joanne? Yeah, come on up.
Joanne Stiggers, nineteen seventeen, Northeast Twentieth Street, Unit One Thirty-One. I'm a passionate transit dri, uh, rider, and that's what I wanted to bring before you all today. I have a real serious concern for our drivers. They are, during the course of a day, there's so much stress put upon them. I don't know if "stress" is a good word to use, but behind the cell phones, the loud conversations that are going on, people have gotten on the bus with alcohol and paperbacks. I've witnessed it. I mean, it's just horrendous, the things that are going on. Just a really quick story. Greyhound, we know, has moved, and one of the concerns that we have is people that have to cross over the bridge to get to the, to the bus station. They get off at Fourth and Martin Luther King, and it, it's heartbreaking to see people with babies, lots of luggage, getting off at Fourth and Martin Luther King, walking over the bridge. Well, two weeks ago, downtown, a little man got on the bus in a wheelchair, and his arm was bent this way, and his hand was twisted, and he was on his way to the bus station. Well, it didn't dawn on me, I didn't think much about it, but there was conversation going on between the driver and another passenger about the concern of people, you know, something should be done about that. Well, when the man got off of the bus, I was on my way home, and my heart just went out. I said, now, how is this little man going to wheel himself over to the Greyhound bus station with one hand, because he was struggling? And I'm not saying it for any honor or anything, but I got off of the bus, and I went over to him, and I says, would you like for me to help you get over to the bus station? And he says, yes. Well, we crossed the street and got on the side where there's a, a walkway, and it was really something for me, you know, for us. He was pedaling his little legs, and we had to stop three times just to get our breath. And I drove him over, well, not drove him, but pushed him over to the bus station. That let me know that, I don't know who can do anything about it, you know, whose problem it is, but something should be done about people getting off of the bus and going over to the Greyhound bus station. And as I take my seat, I would like to see an ordinance where anybody that drives in front of a bus have to pay a five hundred dollar fine. So many automobile drivers turn in front of buses, and it is incredible. It's getting worse. And so I'm saying, I don't know how you all would do it, but make a big sign and put it on the back of every bus, any automobile that turns in the front of a city bus, there's a large fine that they have to pay because they have a total disrespect, and they're putting not only the bus drivers in jeopardy, they have to make quick decisions, Mayor and City Council, about what to do. I was thrown off of a bus in Danville where I lived. I was reading a book, and the next thing I knew is that I was on the floor, and I didn't know what happened. Well, a lady had driven in front of the bus just as she was preparing to take off, and she had to jam on her brakes. So that's something I really want you all to think about, what to do with your drivers and protecting not only them, but the people that ride the bus. Thank you very much.
Roy Stafford, Oklahoma City, still homeless. A lot has transpired since, since I was last spoke, I think it's been over a year. But anyway, Ward Six, May Exile. I requested a meeting with you so that I could bring you up to speed on OKC compassion. That's an ugly place. If you'll bear with me, because it's been more than a year, let me, okay? I attended school after thirty-five years, made A's at O triple C. We're not going to go into that. OKC compassion, I really need you to hear all of this. Reverend Richard Bond and the clients of that place. The clients of that place consist of Bruce, functional alcoholic, Patty, Jonathan, active metha, meth users. It's ridiculous. I got three hundred something days clean. Recently married to Rebecca Marquez, who is my thirty-year companion. You've known of Patricia thirty-three years, do the math. Rebecca and I did not have a sexual relationship during the thirty years. Bueller may. Anyway, I was the recipient of a attack by an inebriated Frank, because everybody knows by first names, Frank Person, who used the word "N-I-G-G-A, you need to get off the porch." I said, you're going to go get a bat? That's what you're going to do? I'll be here standing when you come back. I took a fighter's stand, and when he came back with the bat, I turned, it was going towards here, the bat's right here, did a leg sweep, put him on the ground, applied pressure to his back of his neck until he gave me the bat, threw it to Chad. The whole instance was not reported by Lana Spotted Horse. Lana Spotted Horse is the chief person, she runs the place, basically. When Pastor Bond isn't, isn't available, the police were called on me, and I was the disturbance. I got in a police car and asked for a citizen's assist, which is a whole other thing, I don't even want to go into that. But anyway, a citizen's assist to transport me to a motel room that Rebecca and I had shared earlier that day to get out of the...
Roy, can you wrap it up?
You need, you need to look at that place. I'm going to ask Uncle Bill, because I know you're watching, to get in the car with me because the things that transpired over the last couple of days, like me going to jail twice by Rebecca, I mean, not by Rebecca, excuse me, by Miss Lana Spotted Horse and another gentleman by the last name Bohannon, on some BS.
Roy, thanks a lot. We appreciate it.
... October 27.
October 27.
We have returned from executive session. We have two acts of business. Item 9V was scheduled to go into executive session. We've decided to put that off for two more weeks. So I'll need a motion to defer item 9V until October 27.
Move item...
All right. Cast your votes on the deferral. That item is deferred unanimously.
Karen...
And the council has also...
Yes. Yes on the...
Council has also reached a decision on item 9U. Is there a motion?
Move acceptance of resolution number two, which is to proceed with the acquisition of East Park... I'm sorry.
I'd like to make the motion to move resolution number two, which is to acquire the property indicated as East Park number one.
All right. Is there a second?
Thank you.
All right. We have a motion and a second on item 9U to pursue item number two. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Thanks, everybody. We are adjourned.